Test, 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 test.
Thank you for coming.
Just because you think that's all.
As you know, I love to pay you a check on just a whole bunch of different examples that are in town.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
And do you think it's time we still write?
Just because you think that's all.
As you know, I love to pay you a check on just a whole bunch of different examples that are in town.
Yes.
Where it feels like.
Yes.
We should be telling the other.
I don't think this should be.
We should make sure.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
We're going to tell me that.
I don't think this should be.
We should make sure.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
Two of the flag, and it says it's America.
Two of the Republic, which is a hand.
One nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
In compliance with NJSA 10 colon 4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bressi.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Haller.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Marzo, Dr. Campbell. Did the motion?
Thank you. We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Bressi, Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Haller.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution for tonight. Is there a?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2023 dash 23, resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and design waivers for the construction of the mixed-use building for James R. Johnson Jr., Carol Hardinchuk, and David Johnson, Block 2603, lots 29, 30, and 31. Eligible to vote, Mr. Riker, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Herring, Mr. Riker, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Wall, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Herman.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution for tonight. Is there a?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2023 dash 23, resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and design waivers for the construction of the mixed-use building for James R. Johnson Jr., Carol Hardinchuk, and David Johnson, Block 2603, lots 29, 30, and 31. Eligible to vote, Mr. Riker, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Herring, Mr. Riker, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Wall, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Herman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're hard part is done for the night. Okay, so we have two changes to the agenda schedule. The first change is block 4101, various lots, Jackson Woods Southeast Section 1 will be carried to the November 6, 2023, meeting. Notice? Will notice be required?
Yes.
Notice will be required. May I please have a motion for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second change to the agenda schedule is blocks 2301, 4201, 4203, lots 1, 2, 26.01, 28, 29, 30, dash 2, 15, and 56, and Block 57, Lot 1, Jackson Development Company slash Jackson 21, which will be carried to the November 20th, 2023, meeting, and notice will be required.
I love my notice. Yes, it will.
Okay.
Second.
First, a motion. You're jumping the gun.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any planning or engineering matters?
I'm here as the chairman.
Thank you. Okay, and no legal matters in the scene?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're going to jump right into the applications. Before we start the applications, you know, this board has a 10:30 cutoff time for all new testimony, so I just want to make it clear, you know, at 10:30, we will be stopping new testimony, and we'll finish the meeting from then. Thank you. First application for tonight's block 8101, Lot 10, 715 Bennett Mills LLC. Ms. Jennings.
Thank you. Good evening for the record. I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Williams, Goldman &amp; Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variance relief to construct a approximately 16,377 square foot, second-story office based on an existing retail building on property located at 715 Bennett Mill Road and identified as Lot 10 in Block 8101 on the township's tax maps. In addition, the proposed development will include a reconfiguration of the parking area, as well as modifications to the lighting, landscaping, and stormwater management. The subject property is located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, where the proposed office use is permitted. In addition to site plan approval, the applicant is also seeking two bulk variances from ordinance section 244 dash 56D as follows: maximum impervious coverage, where 60% is permitted and 87% is proposed, and a setback from the non-residential side yard property line, where 10 feet is required and 2.5 feet is proposed. Additionally, applicant seeks a design waiver from your parking, minimum parking requirements, where 189 spaces are required and 180 spaces are proposed. In support of the development proposal, the applicant will call the following four witnesses: one, Hootie Back, professional engineer; Shimon Greenbaum, the licensed architect; Scott Kennel, the traffic consultant; and Andrew Janu, the professional planner. Collectively, their testimony will demonstrate that the requested relief should be granted. The variance for maximum impervious coverage is only 0.3 acres of impervious coverage that is required to provide the additional parking spaces needed to support the proposed office space. Additionally, the design waiver relief for minimum required parking is appropriate because, as stated in the Traffic Safety Bureau's report, the existing 127 parking spaces are not even being utilized today. This application also advances several purposes of the municipal land use law, satisfying the C2 variance criteria. Specifically, the proposed use will advance the following purposes of the MLUL: promotion of a general welfare, promotion of a more desirable visual environment, and the more efficient use of land. Finally, the record will show that the proposal also satisfies the negative criteria, that is that relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant has received the following five reports: the environmental commission report dated March 2023, the traffic safety report dated April 12, 2023, fire safety dated June 29, 2023, board engineer July 31, 2023, and board planner August 11, 2023. With that, we'd like to call up our first witness.
Sure, thank you. First witness gets ready. Mr. Cle, would you like to give your overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No exception to the description of the project, the original submission required, a number of variances, mostly related to signage, revised plans were submitted, which eliminated them or basically took them off the table. But we are still dealing with the maximum impervious coverage, as well as the parking area setback to a non-residential property line. So of course, some supportive testimony from the applicant in relation to those variance requests. The proposal does a two-story addition to an existing building. I would look at it as like a redevelopment project. I think we get a nice facelift for, I'll say, somewhat of a dated, existing development. The addition is going to go on basically in the middle of the existing building, and there's roof areas on either side that there's an indication on the plan that that's going to be utilized for something. I'm not really sure what, so I'll leave it to the applicant to describe that. But in relation to those outdoors, second-floor outdoors areas, if there's any utilities, there's the Dunkin' Donuts involved with the project, is there any existing, I'll say, roof fence that are going to be impacted, and how's that going to be addressed? The proposal fills in an existing drainage basin and substitutes some underground recharge. We take no exception to the design, but it also kind of relates to the maximum impervious coverage. Why that can't be reduced to more conform to ordinances, it would of course mean a reduction in the floor area that's proposed, so like I indicated, some testimony from the applicant regarding the support of that variance request. The landscaping is limited to some street trees along Bennett Mills in Manhattan, so some testimony from the applicant regarding if we can do a little bit better as far as the landscaping, again, kind of related to the maximum impervious coverage. I'm sure if we increase some islands in size, we can reduce the impervious and get some more green area. So those are pretty much the major engineering issues that I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated August 11th of this year. The property is located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, and the uses proposed are permitted in the zone, so this is in fact a conforming use. As Doug indicated, it's sort of a rehabilitation of an existing site. Existing site has about 21,400 square feet of space, they're putting about 16,000 on top. They're utilizing the existing sort of perimeter of the site. I would suggest that when they're asking for variance relief and they're asking for design waivers, the board reconcile our design standards in 2023. Doug was polite. If they need more landscaping, we should, no, if they need more landscaping, we should provide more landscaping. If they want to build a building in Jackson Township in 2023, we have design standards. We appreciate they're going to increase the rateable on the site. We appreciate they're going to take an outdated building and make it look nicer. They should take the site and follow the design standards or ask for the waivers and give the relief that's necessary. That's all I have for starting off. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I swear you in, there are chairs by both doors. If anyone would like, that's standing over there and over there. Folding chairs, feel free to take. Mr. Beck, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your credentials.
Yahuda Back, B-A-C-K, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing. My background is I started working for New Line six years ago, which was also when I started school for engineering right here in Ocean County College. From there, I transferred to NJIT, where I graduated in August of 2021. I took the required FEP exams, and around two months ago, received my PE license.
So this is his very first public hearing.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Well, why don't you stop over here for a little bit? You're going to be prepared.
That's all I'm here for.
Are we the guinea pigs, or?
So would the board accept his qualifications? He is licensed, he just has not had the opportunity to present before.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So if you could, Mr. Beck, for the record, the site plan was prepared under your office's direction?
Correctly, yes.
And if you can describe the existing site conditions, and if you're going to refer to an exhibit, can you just ask Anthony to pull it up on the screen and identify it for the record?
Sure. Let's pull up an exhibit just to make it easier. I think it's A5 in aerial view. Okay, good. North is up on this, what you see on the screen. The site currently is a one-story structure housing around 21,000 square feet of retail. On the north is Bennett Mills Road, which is a county road. On the south is Manhattan Street, which is a township road. There is access to the site from both of these roads. The site itself contains 3.11 acres. It is located in the NC Neighborhood Community Zone, where both retail stores and offices are listed as permitted principal uses. Our proposal, as mentioned before, if you can see on the right side of our site, there's a grassed area that's actually a basin. It's a surface stormwater basin. We're proposing to pave that over to provide additional parking that we need in order to construct the second story to this one-story structure, where we will house around 16,000 square feet of office space. To the right of us on our site is a vacant building, I believe it was a Wawa. To the left is an auto body shop on the northwest, and the southwest is a residential home.
And if you could touch on the applicant's proposal, what are they actually doing to, other than the addition, what are their site improvements?
So we will be improving, of course, like was mentioned, a facelift to the building. The parking itself can do with some improvements. We're proposing to mill and repave and restripe the entire parking lot. We will be adding landscaping. I know as of now, we just proposed the shade trees. Of course, we'll comply with the ordinance. I believe it's three shrubs per tree. We can comply with that, of course. With the stormwater basin itself that we're proposing, currently that stormwater basin takes all the water off of the site and all the water into the basin from the site, and for the larger storms, it lets it run off into Manhattan Street. We're proposing to contain all the stormwater on the site, where it will infiltrate into the ground. Additionally, we will be providing pretreatment in the form of one of the applicable MTDs. We are asking for two variances, two bulk variances, one for his maximum impervious coverage. We're proposing 84%, where 60% is permitted. Currently, the site has around 77% impervious, which is above the 60% permitted. The second variance we're asking for is a setback from a non-residential side yard property line, we're asking for two and a half feet, or really three feet, because the parking, you have to count for the half a foot for curb, so we're asking for a three-feet setback variance, where 10 feet is required. Existing on the site right now is around five and a half feet setback for that.
In support of the development proposal, the app will call the following four witnesses. One, Hootie Back, professional engineer. Shimon Greenbaum, the licensed architect. Scott Kennel, the traffic consultant. And Andrew Janu, the professional planner. Collectively, their testimony will demonstrate that the requested relief should be granted. The variance for maximum impervious coverage is only 0.3 acres of impervious coverage that is required to provide the additional parking spaces needed to support the proposed office space. Additionally, the design waiver relief for minimum required parking is appropriate because, as stated in the Traffic Safety Bureau's report, the existing 127 parking spaces are not even being utilized today. This application also advances several purposes of the municipal land use law, satisfying the C2 variance criteria. Specifically, the proposed use will advance the following purposes of the MLUL. Promotion of a general welfare, promotion of a more desirable visual environment, and the more efficient use of land. Finally, the record will show that the proposal also satisfies the negative criteria, that is, that relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant has been received the following five reports. The environmental commission report dated March 2023, the traffic safety report dated April 12, 2023, fire safety dated June 29, 2023, board engineer July 31, 2023, and board planner August 11, 2023. With that, we'd like to call up our first witness.
Thank you. First witness gets ready. Mr. Cle, would you like to give your overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No exception to the description of the project. The original submission required a number of variances, mostly related signage. Revised plans were submitted, which eliminated them or basically took them off the table. But we are still dealing with the maximum impervious coverage as well as the parking area setback to a non-residential property line. So of course, some supportive testimony from the applicant in relation to those variance requests. The proposal does a two-story addition to an existing building. I would look at it as like a redevelopment project. I think we get a nice facelift for, I'll say, somewhat of a dated existing development. The addition is going to go on basically in the middle of the existing building, and there is roof areas on either side that there's an indication on the plan that that's going to be utilized for something. I'm not really sure what, so I'll leave it to the applicant to describe that. But in relation to those outdoors, second-floor outdoors areas, if there's any utilities, there's the Dunkin' Donuts involved with the project, is there any existing, I'll say, roof fence that are going to be impacted and how's that going to be addressed? The proposal fills in an existing drainage basin and substitutes some underground recharge. We take no exception to the design, but it also kind of relates to the maximum impervious coverage. Why that can't be reduced to more conform to ordinances, it would of course mean a reduction in the floor area that's proposed. So like I indicated, some testimony from the applicant regarding or support of that variance request. The landscaping is limited to some street trees along Bennett Mills and Manhattan. So some testimony from the applicant regarding if we can do a little bit better as far as the landscaping, again, kind of related to the maximum impervious coverage. I'm sure if we increase some islands in size, we can reduce the impervious and get some more green area. So those are pretty much the major engineering issues that I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated August 11 of this year. The property is located in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, and the uses proposed are permitted in the zone. So this is, in fact, a conforming use. As Doug indicated, it's sort of a rehabilitation of an existing site. Existing sites has about 21,400 square feet of space. They're putting about 16,000 on top. They're utilizing the existing perimeter of the site. I would suggest that when they're asking for variance relief and they're asking for design waivers, the board reconcile our design standards in 2023. Doug was polite. If they need more landscaping, we should, no, if they need more landscaping, we should provide more landscaping. If they want to build a building in Jackson Township in 2023, we have design standards. We appreciate they're going to increase the rateable on the site. We appreciate they're going to take an outdated building and make it look nicer. They should take the site and follow the design standards or ask for the waivers and give the relief that's necessary. That's all I have for starting off. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I swear you in, there are chairs by both doors. If anyone would like, that's standing over there and over there. Folding chairs, feel free to take. Mr. Back, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your credentials.
Yehuda Back, B-A-C-K, Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of New Jersey in good standing. My background is I started working for New Line six years ago, which was also when I started school for engineering right here in Ocean County College. From there, I transferred to NJIT where I graduated in August of 2021. I took the required FEP exams and around two months ago received my PE license.
So this is his very first public hearing.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Well, why don't you stop over here for a little bit?
That's all I'm here for.
Are we the guinea pigs or?
So would the board accept his qualifications? He is licensed, he just has not had the opportunity to present before?
We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you could, Mr. Back, for the record, the site plan was prepared under your office's direction?
Correctly, yes.
And if you can describe the existing site conditions and if you're going to refer to an exhibit, can you just ask Anthony to pull it up on the screen and identify it for the record?
Sure. Let's pull up an exhibit just to make it easier. I think it's A5 in aerial view. North is up on this, what you see on the screen. The site currently is a one-story structure housing around 21,000 square feet of retail. On the north is Bennett Mills Road, which is a county road. On the south is Manhattan Street, which is a township road. There is access to the site from both of these roads. The site itself contains 3.11 acres. It is located in the NC Neighborhood Community Zone where both retail stores and offices are listed as permitted principal uses. Our proposal, as mentioned before, if you can see on the right side of our site, there's a grassed area that's actually a basin. It's a surface stormwater basin. We're proposing to pave that over to provide additional parking that we need in order to construct the second story to this one-story structure where we will house around 16,000 square feet of office space. To the right of us on our site is a vacant building, I believe it was a Wawa. To the left is an auto body shop on the northwest, and the southwest is a residential home.
And if you could touch on the applicant's proposal, what are they actually doing to other than the addition? What are their site improvements?
So we will be improving, of course, like was mentioned, a facelift to the building. The parking itself can do with some improvements. We're proposing to mill and repave and restripe the entire parking lot. We will be adding landscaping. I know as of now, we just proposed the shade trees. Of course, we'll comply with the ordinance. I believe it's three shrubs per tree. We can comply with that, of course. With the stormwater basin itself that we're proposing, currently that stormwater basin takes all the water off of the site and all the water into the basin from the site. And for the larger storms, it lets it run off into Manhattan Street. We're proposing to contain all the stormwater on the site where it will infiltrate into the ground. Additionally, we will be providing pretreatment in the form of one of the applicable MTDs. We are asking for two variances, two bulk variances, one for his maximum impervious coverage. We're proposing 84% where 60% is permitted. Currently, the site has around 77% impervious, which is above the 60% permitted. The second variance we're asking for is a setback from a non-residential side yard property line. We're asking for two and a half feet or really three feet because the parking, you have to count for the half a foot for curb. So we're asking for a three-feet setback variance where 10 feet is required. Existing on the site right now is around five and a half feet setback for that. Sign variances, as we said before, we're not asking for any sign variances. I believe it complies with the ordinance, and for the future signs, we don't know yet what we're going to be putting there based on the tenants or the size and colors, but we will make sure to comply with the ordinance. A design waiver we are asking for is for the minimum parking required is 181, and we're proposing 171, so we have a deficit of 10 spots. Our traffic engineer will testify towards that.
And with respect to the parking, we're going to meet the new make-ready electrical field charging requirements?
We will, yes.
And will you meet the appropriate handicap parking spaces?
Yes.
And you heard the comments from Mr. Cle with respect to trying to balance some of our design waivers, and I know that we had a brief discussion before this meeting started. I know you took another look at the site plan.
Mrs. Jennings, just hold up one sec. If you just approach us real quick.
Us?
Yeah, if you can. We just go off the record just for a second. If you just go back on the record. Yeah, I believe that we have, a board member is going to recuse himself real quickly that we can continue on with the application.
You may proceed.
Okay. We are asking for an environmental impact statement waiver due to the fact that the proposal involves less than 20,000 square feet of new gross floor area.
Okay, and just before we got interrupted, I was asking you a specific question with regard to some of the comments that Mr. Cle had with regarding balancing some of the design waivers that we had with respect to the minimum landscaped islands. I think there's something we can do with the landscaping to make some improvements with the site?
Yes, yes. Anthony, can you please pull up exhibit A8? Thank you. Can you zoom in a little bit right in the center? Perfect. Thank you, sir. You can see in the red, we're showing a little bit larger islands, and we will be providing, we can provide the five-foot radius that the ordinance requires. Those islands are going to give you the 10-foot width that we need. The site wasn't originally designed like this because we were trying to get as much parking as we can, but I believe the traffic engineer would be okay with, you know, losing these spaces if it increases the green area on the site and allows for better traffic circulation on the site. Those red areas are showing how we can expand the traffic islands to be that size, which is what the ordinance requires. Doing this would make us lose, I believe, seven spots. So that's how we address that. I also can address the design waiver for a loading and unloading area. I went out to the site, the back of the building is what they're using right now, and they actually have it striped like that. I'm not sure why my survey crew didn't get that, but it is striped and labeled as a loading/unloading area. It's more than sufficient for the use of the retail and even the office space that's proposed.
And if you could just touch on a little bit about the actual office, if you know the hours that the office will be open, et cetera?
Sure. I know basic information that was given to me. The applicant can testify if necessary for more. We're proposing six new second-floor office suites, which are expected to have around 18 employees. Office hours are, as normal people work, nine to five. There's currently seven existing first-floor retail tenants, which operate from about 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, and if you just could describe the utility plan and lighting plan?
Sure. With what we were talking about before with the utilities, the utilities inside the building, the architect will, of course, coordinate with his MEP and what is existing on the site to make sure no vents are covered up. With the utilities that I designed for outside the building, everything that's there now is to remain. We're not changing anything. The existing utilities are sufficient. I was in touch with the fire official who wants a few more hydrants, which we're amenable to, that's fine. And with regard to the lighting, currently the lighting is a little bit weak. I think it's old. I think the site was built in the 1970s. We are proposing some new lights to make it a little bit brighter, cover all the blank The lights will be on a timer as they currently are to turn off at night when the building is not in use. And with regard to the landscaping, as mentioned, we will comply with the ordinance and the shade tree commission, whatever they want. That's okay. And that's all for the landscaping. I did read the letters from the board consultants, all of them, the planner, the engineer, the fire official, the county. I know there was some mention of improvements on the county road. We're in touch with the county. They have their master plan, which as soon as they tell us to add another lane, of course, we would add another lane. As of now, there's no improvements proposed on either roadway.
So the direct testimony I have from Mr. Back.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Good evening. Welcome to the field. I want to say something crass like you'll regret it, but congratulations.
Tell me afterwards.
You read our report?
I did.
Which was dated August 11?
Yes.
All right. In no particular order, you indicated you visited the site, you went out, you looked in the rear of the building, there were loading areas that were striped. Oh, there are fire lanes back there.
Yes.
How are you going to reconcile the fire lanes with the loading area?
There's more than enough area. There's 40 feet back there from the face of the curb till the building. A fire lane needs to be a minimum of 20. We would like it to be 24. I'm sure the fire official would like that, too. Even with keeping it at 24, there's still sufficient space for a loading and unloading area, even if we do propose a, if the architect requires it, a sidewalk back there, which he may need.
Well, we'll get to that, I promise. So the area in the back is not striped for parking?
It is not.
But people park back there.
Not on my two visits.
Well, I've been there several dozen times. People park in the back. So I need to get something on the record, either from you or from the attorney that says there will be signs that indicate no parking.
Will do.
Small business owners love to walk in the back. You're going to have an entrance for the second floor back there. So the people who are in the back three units are going to want to park there. So I need to have a solid understanding on the record of what your proposal is as it relates to parking, fire lanes, and loading and unloading in the rear yard. And if your testimony and Ms. Jennings or your client agree that there'll be no parking in the back, I think that reconciles that issue.
Yes, so just so the record's clear, the applicant agrees there'll be no parking in the back, and we go put some type of signage, either painted on the pavement or an actual sign, whatever you, the board prefers.
Make that a condition of approval.
So I don't know if you spoke about the location of the trash enclosure and/or dumpsters for the building?
I did not speak about that yet.
If that's your neck of the woods.
It is my neck of the woods.
Okay.
So currently, there is a one trash enclosure. You can see on the bottom left, it's called out of the site.
Do you have a pointer?
Was I supposed to bring one? Next time.
We got a pointer for you.
Anthony, come through in the clinch.
Thank you, Anthony.
Anthony, you are the most useful person.
Just point along as you go so everyone can see what you're referring to.
Is the existing trash enclosure, when I went out there, I did see some more trash enclosures up there and up there, which are good enough space for them. They should be enclosed in a, you know, in a fence. I'm waiting for the public works to tell us how many trash enclosures they want. We have enough space to propose them with screening if necessary.
My concern is you're here before this board to get an approval. You put on these plans what it is you want. You have a dumpster in the southwest corner. You have at least two trash enclosures up by the electric poles on the northwest corner. I don't know where you're going to put a trash enclosure in that area. So is it going to block a building, a fire lane? You really can't push the curb out. That's all existing landscaping. So I need to know where it's going to be. Are we going to lose another two parking spaces to build a trash enclosure for the front half of the building or the Bennett Mills roadside of it? So at some point, it doesn't have to be now, if you want to discuss it with your client and then get back to us, but the dumpster locations, I think it's important for the board to understand where they are and what impact they're going to have on the number of parking spaces, which, as you originally said, you're maxing the parking spaces so you can max the yield of the building. Fair enough. That's a great job. You should continue to do that. Your clients will love you. Boards might not be real happy when you don't provide dumpsters in the right spot or buffers or whatever, but so our concern here is that even with an older unit, an older building, it may not be fully occupied. I already have two dumpsters out where they don't belong.
Yeah.
So I need some affirmative testimony from the applicant that says we're going to have one, two dumpster locations, we're going to coordinate them with someone, we're going to figure out if we need to lose parking spaces, or if we're going to ask for waiver relief. Otherwise, I don't think the board has enough information to say, all right, well, we'll give you preliminary and final, but we don't know where the dumpster is going.
On short notice, I believe, I'm 99% positive, they will be out here, which is where they are now. The only difference will be we will propose screening for them, what they have now. There may be needed one or even two more for the office space. That's what I was referring to when I said I'll wait for public works. There's enough space for two more even over there with fence screening. Since the loading area is down here, this area is free for trash enclosures.
Staying with the rear of the building, I know you're not the architect, but they asked you to show their plans, their proposal on your plans. So the rear access to the building, when you come out, when occupants leave the building, they would be facing south as they walked out, correct?
Which door are we talking about?
The one along the fire lane in the rear of the building.
Right when they come out of the door, they'll be facing west.
They're going to exit the south part of that stairwell, correct?
I'm not sure. Can we zoom in?
I guess my question is, when someone leaves that building and they have to get to a safe, where are they walking to and how are they getting there?
Right. That's a fair question. We will propose a sidewalk back there, four-foot sidewalk. I believe there's enough space for that.
All right. Well, again, my concern is that without a detail...
I don't mean to cut anybody off. Ma'am, you turn your light on that's going directly into our eyes. Just, yeah, yeah.
Light on?
Sorry about that, guys.
Okay, sorry.
So it seemed from a fire protection perspective, the easiest way would be to go up towards Bennett Mills Road. You'd have to go around the stairwell knockout, and you'd have to go past that sort of fenced-in utility electric cabinet area to get onto the sidewalk around the side of the building. I suspect the architect, when we question them and/or the building official, are going to say you have to provide some safe route to get from the outside of the building to someplace. And so while the architect has a nice plan, they left it to you to come here and get beat up by me about how are people getting from there to here? If the rear of the building is a fire lane and a no parking zone and a loading area. So I don't know if it's, I'll ask the architect, why can't that bump out be in the corner of the building? And then when you walk out, you're on sidewalk already. You're on there, you don't have to walk through the fire lane in the rear of the building. That's an internal thing for the architect. My question to you is you're going to need to provide a safe route to get people out of the building to another location, not along the fire lane. Would you agree?
Yes.
Because you got to go first, you get to answer some questions you probably won't know, but I have to ask somebody. The existing Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru, are you familiar with any approvals that the site has for the improvements that are back there?
I looked. I did not find any.
Have you had an opportunity to review any of the previous approvals relating to this application?
I did not see them.
Design waivers or variances previously granted through the life of the application?
I did not.
Okay. So that being said, in my opening comments, while we certainly appreciate someone taking a dated site and improving it, this is the board's opportunity to make the site safer or better from a traffic perspective or a layout perspective. And one of those things is having curb ends at the end of parking areas, crosswalks that are delineated so people know where they're going to, and having them done in design with the ordinance standards. So I'll ask you this question. Did you prepare a sketch that shows a waiver-free parking layout? Provides all the curb ends, provides the correct radiuses, areas for landscaping?
I did not. I did with just the radiuses and the widened islands. I did not do one that does the curb endings. Usually, we iron that out as we go along, based on your review letters, which we will comply with. We have no problem putting in some more curb if needed. But I did not have a sketch showing all of that, no.
My concern is, as you come in from Bennett Mills Road, there are no curb islands. There's not one up against the building, there's not one for the parking spaces that are perpendicular to the front of the building. So instantly, you're going to be down three more parking spaces. So in fairness to the board, either ask for the waiver that says, you know what, we don't think, we think the parking requirement is too high, and we think we can sustain the waiver of parking, or ask for the parking, or ask for the waiver of the design standards for the curb ends. It's got to be one or the other. The board needs to know what they're choosing from. You have to present something that says, we're going to stick with this one. And so I thought I heard, well, Ms. Jennings gave a great opening, she's not testifying. Police department says, well, it's never used. Well, that's probably one of the reasons we're fixing it up, but when we fix it up, you don't just fix it up to max out the yield, we fix it up to bring it into compliance with design standards that probably weren't in place when it was built several decades ago. So we'd be interested to make sure we know what it is you're asking us for relief for. If in the end, you need a parking waiver, but the parking waiver can be sustained and the yield can be saved, fine. If not, and the board says, well, we want you to have the right number of parking spaces and the right number of curb end islands and the right amount of landscaping, and you're going to lose 10 or 15 parking spaces and your yield has to come, at least we'll know what you're asking the board to vote on. And I guess the last question I have, at least for now, and you've done great, by the way, pedestrian circulation. It appears that the front entrance to the second floor would be opposite, looks like a bowtie of curb islands right across the way. And I'm just wondering, as we had, as you had created an efficient layout by taking the parking instead of being parallel to the front of the building and now having a parallel to Manhattan, there's not a straight line for someone to walk to that main entrance. So my concern is, we're going to have a new traffic circulation layout for people to get used to. More importantly, people are going to go to that main entrance. So half of the site or all the people that are going to come at eight or nine in the morning, if they're not parking in the back, they're parking in the front. So now 16,000 square feet or 18 employees or your clients are going to walk in that door, and I'm trying to find a more, I'm trying to find the best pedestrian route and crosswalk to get there, which makes me want to ask you if that would be this parking layout or a layout that had the parking parallel to the front of the building as it is currently, and then just get rid of two parking spaces, have them striped or curved so people can walk through. A lot of new malls have that. Jackson Crossing has it. So just, I'd like to hear from you or the architect about pedestrian circulation to that main access to the second floor of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, Mr. Cle, one second. Just to really jump on Mr. Peters' point for a second, I do believe this board recently has approved a 75,000-square-foot office building right up the block. You know, just talking to pedestrian circulation, the guy, you know, there's 350 parking spots or so in that plaza, there may be people coming for the retail during their time off. So, you know, we would like to see some sort of pedestrian access. Mr. Cle?
Thank you, and welcome aboard. You'll have fun.
Look at us.
It's the best. You know, pretty much, first thing, you mentioned a couple times about public works. There is no plan to have public works picking up the trash. This is all going to be private pickup, whatever. So I'm not really sure where public works comes in. Picking up on Ernie's part, comments regarding, I guess, access to the rear and the need to have some delineated where people are going to, are supposed to walk. There's also, I think you had indicated, at least two additional trash enclosures that are going to be put behind this building?
If needed.
If needed.
Again, the whole idea of, you know, the pedestrian. So now, they're going to come out the back. Now they have to walk along two screened dumpsters, but there's going to be at least one portion that's open. I think the access, you know, needs some, you know, review and tweaking. The plan that marked in red that expanded the, I'll say, some of the islands at ten feet in conformance with the ordinance standards, I think is definitely a step in the right direction. And I believe there's one hundred and ninety-eighty-nine spaces required. Based on the plan that you have here, widening those islands, do you have a number on what is, we know one hundred and eighty-nine, but how much did we lose by increasing the islands to ordinance standards?
Yeah, we would lose seven spots. So where required is one eighty-nine, we're proposing one seventy-nine for a deficit.
I'm sorry, one seventy-nine?
Where required is one eighty-nine. I mean, it depends on how you count the EV spots as a credit or the other way. But let's go with one eighty-nine is required. We're proposing one seventy-nine, and then we will lose an additional seven. So a deficit of seventeen spaces.
So you're required, based on this, you'll have, you know, one hundred and eighty-nine is required, and you're going to be providing one hundred and seventy-two?
Correct.
Yeah, if we just go over that one more time, just so we're clear, so we don't get lost on the numbers.
I'm sorry?
If we just go over that one more time, just to clarify.
One hundred and eighty-nine is required, and if we enlarge the islands to conform with ordinance standards per this plan that we're looking at, there's one hundred and seventy-two that's provided. If the entrance drive off of Bennetts Mills Road.
Sorry, Mr. Cle, just one more.
I'm counting. I'm sitting here counting, and if you put in the curbs, as you said you would do, then back those caps, I think you said you'd lose another three spaces. So that makes it one hundred and seventy.
If we would put in the end curb right by the entrance, that's where you're getting at, right by the entrance by Bennetts Mills Road?
Yeah, another three.
Yes, we would lose another, another at least two. I don't know for sure.
You said three in the first place. So that would put us down to one hundred and seventy. Just so we're all on the same page.
Yeah. To make it more fun, if we would add in eight more EV spaces, convert eight of those spaces to EV, we'd get eight more credit, which is allowed per the ordinance. So then we'd end up with one seventy-eight, just to make it fun.
You know, at the entrance drive to Bennetts Mills Road, exiting the site on the left, that I think is obviously below the ten-foot minimum. So if we made that ten to conform, we'd lose another one.
For sure.
Okay. If we go to the, I'll say, the driveway interconnection between this site and the adjacent property, I'm seeing eight-point-seven-three-foot-wide island. So to make it conform, we'd be losing another spot.
Well, that we can go into the drive aisle over there. Maybe we'd have to get permission from the neighbor?
I'm talking about the new island on this property. It looks like it's eight-point-seven-three feet wide.
We should be able to go into the drive aisle over there. I think the drive aisle is oversized.
Which aisle are you referring to? You just pointed to it?
The aisle that goes between the, right here.
Yeah.
Where, I think we're at a radius of four-point-eight over there, where we need a radius of five. That's just to match the existing. But if needed, I think we can go up to five.
And if we come down to the same area, same island, and if we come down towards Manhattan Street, there's, it looks like a striped island that's proposed. Couldn't we make that, you know, a concrete island with a tree and some additional landscaping? And I think if we did, we'd probably lose another spot there.
Probably.
I'm not keeping track, but we know we have one hundred and eighty-nine. Do we know where we are? I would think it's probably one sixty-five?
Sounds about right.
And all these islands, you're going to have the tree and the shrubs per ordinance?
Absolutely.
And the architect will talk about the second floor decks or second floor roof areas that's going to be used?
Yes.
That's all for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So were you tasked with the landscaping and buffer review as well?
Yes.
Okay. You can thank Ms. Jennings afterwards. In our report, we talk about the need for waivers for areas up against Manhattan or up against Bennetts Mills. So again, I think there needs to be some testimony saying, whether this is existing or this is proposed, landscaping's very thin. There's really no buffer along either of the streets in accordance with the standards on page ten in our report. So if we're going to request relief, let's say these are the waivers we're going to need, or say we're going to do it, and in order to do it, we're going to change the parking layout.
For the frontages on Manhattan Street and Bennetts Mills Road, we will be providing the required buffer of shade trees and shrubs. On the west side, there isn't existing buffer. It looks pretty thick. When I went out there, I don't know what it looks like in the winter. But for me, it looks pretty thick for now.
What about along Manhattan Street?
We'll add shade trees and shrubs.
Would you be willing to supplement some of the existing shrubbery for something a little more robust than what's currently there?
On the west side we're talking about?
Both sides. It's kind of, a lot of weeds out there.
We're talking about this side and this side over here?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We're actually adding in a wider buffer in this vicinity over here. Currently, there's five and a half feet. We're going to convert that to around fifteen or sixteen feet, and we'll put in trees and shrubs there.
Could you explain to the board, there's a common property line to the east of your site with the Wawa site where the, your proposed parking's two and a half feet off the property line, and there's a side yard that in theory should have a ten-foot setback or strip or buffer. At two and a half feet, I'm not sure you can plant anything in there. Could you explain to the board either what the rationale is or what the supporting testimony for the waiver is, or some information, is it going to be changed? If it's going to stay, how are we going to deal with it?
We are proposing to keep that buffer. Currently, like I said, there's five and a half feet buffer over there, which seems like back in the day, they must have had some sort of agreement with the neighbor. I know that they had an agreement since they're sharing Stormwater Basin. There is an agreement in place to share Stormwater Basin. I don't know what they had back then, but there must have been some sort of agreement with the buffering.
Well, my point is, you're taking the Stormwater Basin, filling it in, and moving the parking to within two and a half feet of the property line where ten feet's required. Is your testimony, it's because the rest of the site was that way?
No. My testimony is that we will maybe reach out to the neighbor, see if they have an issue with this.
I'm sorry?
We can reach out to the neighbor and see if they have an issue with this buffer being this close. But it seems like until now, they didn't have an issue, but we'll reach out to confirm that they still do not have an issue.
Okay, but it still requires relief from this board?
Yes.
That's, you doing that would be in support of your request for a waiver from this board?
Correct.
You, and again, I apologize, you're the first guy, so you get to go. Are you aware of any cross-access utility easements between the owner of your site and the owner of the site to the east?
I'm not a hundred percent positive. There must be one for Stormwater since they share a basin.
Well, there's access also.
And an access one, for sure.
Bennetts Mills.
I don't know how they did things back then, but I'm assuming there's one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think there's a lot to unpack there. Anyone from the board have any comments about, sure, Mr. Riker?
Good evening. Is this building under new management?
Yes. Has been under new management, I believe, for maybe two years.
All right. Back of the building is a hot mess. Like to see the dumpsters cleaned up, like the semen pens. There's a fry oil container that sits out there that is just a hot mess. And my request inclination, suggestion would be a good row of armarities on that strip between the hardware store and this with irrigation. The problem is, there's nothing back there, nothing thrives, and it's just become a place for dead cats and candy wrappers, so to speak. But if you're going to have your guests in your building in the back there, my message to the management is it's got to look almost as good as the front, because it's looked like the back of a restaurant row for some time. I was there a few weeks ago, and it's just, it's a hot mess, and the message is, they got to do better. Has nothing to do with you, but just, it's an operations thing and ties into what you're doing. But that would be my suggestion. Please, thank you.
Anyone else? Sheriff, it's Sullivan.
I'm going to assume that the businesses are going to stay in operation during construction?
I don't know. You have to ask the architect.
All right. As far as the parking goes, if, if we were to give you a waiver on the parking, would we get a guarantee that the existing shrubbery areas and areas that are used as buffer would be built up a little bit better, a little bit better coverage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I go there every day. I'm in that shopping center for something almost every day. My biggest, you can't see me because I'm sitting down, but I'm very short. And on the dollar store side, that curb has got to be, it's not an eight-foot riser, I'll tell you that. It's not a twelve-foot riser. It's probably inch riser. It's probably a fourteen-inch riser. And I have trouble getting, just climbing up it. So when you're redoing the parking lot, I hope you're going to make it much more standard.
Will do.
You need to take a look at that because it's a serious problem in there. And it's a water, it's a place where water gathers, and it gets very icy in the winter. So it's a dangerous spot.
Are you talking about the grading?
The grading. The grading is, needs serious attention.
Will do.
Thank you.
Sure. So a couple of questions. In the rear, there's, assuming there's going to be a spot for, I'm sorry, in the rear of the building, I'm assuming there is going to be a dedicated space for delivery vehicles to park?
A loading unloading zone, yes.
Okay. And there'll be adequate space for any fire vehicles to traverse around them if necessary?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the parking, you know, it's just hard to grapple with. You know, we have a lot of calculations here, what, you know, what the board would like to see and not like to see in regarding, you know, if you get rid of the curbs, three spots, if you, you know, add where shade trees, six spots, you know, I think there's a lot there to unpack. What's your professional opinion?
My professional opinion is that even going down, we can add in the, if the curb likes the sidewalks and the larger, the larger islands, I think that we have enough space. We can go down in the parking. The traffic engineer can testify to how much parking we need, but I believe it's sufficient even with reducing it if we do get that waiver.
And will it become a safer site with that, with those improvements made?
Yes. Circulation will be much easier.
It'll be easier and safer for pedestrians, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the board? Sure.
Yes, hearing going back and forth about the amount of parking spots in there between like one eighty-nine is required, and it's just been eking down less and less and less. Have you ever given any consideration to reducing the size of the square footage you want to put on to help reduce the amount of parking spaces you need and get some more? If you're going to be a deficit, more of a reasonable deficit, right now, it's like at least twenty or more. And to me, it seems excessive. I know there's restrictions in that site, you know, how far you can go, just can't explode into the road, but you have control over how big your development's going to be. So if you reduce the size, you need less spaces. Rather than try to figure out, you know, how many less you need, how about cutting down your size so you actually need less to begin with by our ordinances, and then we have something more to discuss. But listening to Mr. Cle and everything, I heard the number one fifty-five. It's really getting down to fulfill what you want to do. And to me, that's totally unacceptable. Okay, you got to try to conform if you can. Okay, we don't have to conform here, but you're the applicant. You have to really conform to our ordinances. Thank you.
I mean, to that point, I mean, I think we're bringing down the parking. I think their planner is just going to have a harder time to justify, you know, any relief that may be granted under the ordinance.
Understood. I think part of the issue is that the current site itself has a lot of excess parking. So I think perhaps if we had some testimony as to exactly how many spaces are not being utilized, I think you're going to find that that gap is what we're talking about right now.
We really can't count on what's there now. Things change. We know that. Some of those stores have been there since the dawn of man. I've lived here since nineteen seventy, so I was there when that was built. We don't know what's, we can't count on what's there now. We have to talk about what might be in the future. So right now, there are two restaurants technically there. You know, that brings in different traffic at different times. You've got Dunkin' Donuts, you've got the Chinese restaurant. We can't consider, we know the parking lot's empty. I mean, I know it's empty. I'm there all the time. But we don't know it's going to be there in two years or five years or ten years. So we can't use that, what's there now, as a deciding point for us. It's just not what we can do. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell, I didn't hear anything about Sullivan?
Well, I'm waiting for the architect. I have lots of questions for the architect.
Just two quick, two quick questions. Number one, not a question, but if you're able to handle this room in your first application, everything else is downhill from here. So most applications don't have a hundred and fifty people in the room. So, you know, this is a pretty exceptional first appearance by you.
Thank you.
First thing, deed restrictions. I know it's been there for a real long time. Any kind of adjacent property interests, when it comes down to deed restrictions, I mean, you know, ordinarily, some people take a look at it, some people don't. I just don't know if anything, if there's crosswalk, you know, conditions that both people use or easements that they both use, anything delineated within the deed itself? Anybody?
I believe there's only a drainage easement. That was the only thing that we could find.
Okay. Second question is that we may take a break just to, we got a whole host of issues to, they may want to talk about with the applicant. One, one just kind of tricky one is, have you guys provided a grading kind of analysis or anything like that? Was that on the plans? And Michelle, Ms. Campbell brought up a very good point, due to the significant history of the structure being there for a very long time. I know the federal ADA standards have changed, I don't know, three times since like the seventies, and based upon that, there's very, very little, very little commercial properties that are grandfathered in, and they're only grandfathered in under like very, very specific reasons and facts and circumstances that are kind of crazy, in all honesty. But based upon that, if, you may want to have a talk with the applicant as to whether or not they're going to be willing to regrade just to be federally ADA compliant. I know that sometimes that's something that goes, and you discuss with the, you know, building department and outside agency approval and all that. But you may just want to have a chat with the applicant regarding that, because this may help you out later down the road, because there are a significant amount of individuals are out there who are systematically going through town by town, trying to begin litigation on that aspect of the thing, on that aspect of the law. And quite frankly, not a whole lot of commercial property holders that are this old are grandfathered in, and it kind of wreaks havoc with a lot of the community when somebody gets their hands into it. So that may just be something you may want to have a chat with the applicant about. That is all I got.
Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two, one question would be to, there are two questions. One is to, are professionals and/or any of the senior members of the board that would have any history with the applicant as well, to any extent, was this ever declared or rather considered for the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment or redevelopment plan, whether it's longevity, longevity of the site or any functional obsolescence, any of these? of these kinds of things? Such a general thought from a historical standpoint, which gives a lot of flexibility to design significant improvements. That's just an open question. The other is a comment related to the question. The traffic circulation around the drive-through is a disaster, totally conflicts. If you're, yeah, if you're there long enough or if you're going through even on occasion, if emergency apparatus needs to get in there, there are conflicts getting in and getting out, are you, can you speak to that? Or in this opportunity, if there's, if in the event that you're improving this, are you going to, maybe you did and I just didn't quite hear it, are you improving what, as a layperson, I would say is a failed traffic circulation area, specifically the drive-through with that facility that's currently there?
So the traffic engineer can testify to this a little bit more. I believe that with better striping, that, that entrance that you're talking about, while people are waiting, once it's striped a little better, they'll stay in their lane, literally, and, and fire vehicles will be able to go in the second lane, which does exist. Usually people go right on the middle of those two lanes, but I believe with some better striping, which is being proposed now, I believe that will get rid of that problem. With regard to blocking the parking, that is an issue that is, whoever designed the site originally, that does seem to be an issue. Again, the traffic engineer will testify towards that.
Okay, just one additional comment. What occasionally happens, or maybe more than occasionally, maybe there's a management issue for the franchise, but folks get tired of waiting in that line, and they go the opposite direction, back out behind the building to, incorrectly, but to go out that way, and then there are conflicts of the proper direction coming the opposite way. I don't know if there's a cure to that, but that's what's happening on the ground, and to the extent that you would increase the, you want to make it attractive, so obviously you would have much more traffic there if it's functioning well, that's an issue that may compound with a successful building. But what happens now is folks are going the opposite way through the back of the building to get out instead of waiting in a backed-up line. Thank you.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes, continuing on Dunkin' Donuts driving, which I had circled here, the striping's not going to help the fact that when it gets backed up because they're slow or they're busy or whatever, it actually backs up almost into Manhattan Street sometimes. So you could put all the striping you want, it's not going to help that. So that, that's a problem that if we're going to fix this, that's got to be fixed. And, and like the administrator said, emergency vehicles aren't going to get through if a car can't get through or if people are getting blocked on Manhattan Street. And the other question I have, I guess for our professionals or you, if you can answer it, with all the changing on this parking from 17 to 19, to 18, and everything else and all these islands, what's happening to impervious coverage? You're at 87% when you came in, 60% is allowed. What is this going to change? Are we going to reduce the impervious coverage or not? Or increase it? And still not have parking? So you have extra impervious coverage and not enough parking, something is not a marriage.
We will reduce the impervious cover by, by adding in these islands. We're at 84. We can go down, I think it goes down by a, a point and a half, so 82 and a half impervious.
Eighty-two and a half compared to-
As opposed to 84, which we're proposing now.
Sixty percent, thank you.
Dr. Campbell?
Just to make it clear, I'm delighted that you're doing this project, and we talk about the historical, it need, that whole wedge needs attention, that's for sure. So I'm looking forward to being able to drive by a very attractive environment and, and not having gravel in my tires when I park in that parking lot, which is in horrible condition. So we're not opposed, it's not that we're generally opposed to a project like this, it's that we want it done right because now, since 1970, there, it's been a long time. It's going to be a long time until the next time somebody looks at this. So we just need it done right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Riker?
Okay, Mr. Buck, I'm going to teach you a neat trick. Ms. Jennings, we had a project over at the gas station on County Line Road, it was in the middle of a jug handle, and one of the workarounds or ways that the board helped project-
Adjusted.
-was adjusted, pick a verb, was taken into consideration the stairwell spaces, common area lobby. In my professional opinion, these spaces are not always occupied full-time. What I would suggest for the architect who's hiding in the crowd somewhere, before you come up here and testify, why don't you tell us what the square footage space for first floor, second floor, on the staircases, and the common lobby that rises to the second floor? With the understanding that those are not truly full-time occupied spaces, which may lead us to consider parking because they're not office space. So I'd like to see some testimony on that, and Mr. Buck, that's another way to skin the cat, if you will.
I like it.
To give a little more latitude. And we were amenable to that once before, and I suspect with the correct testimony.
One more, really to that point, one more, sorry, yeah, one more thing that, you know, the board does like to see, you know, professionals like to see is crossover, the uses where you have off, the peak hour uses of an office versus the peak hour uses of retail, weekends, early mornings, et cetera, you know, any of that, you know, how, any of how that coexists with each other to be able to justify, you know, at least some testimony on, on that point, to be able to justify any variance that the board may consider. Mr. Herring?
I'm just have, I'm not going to get on the commentary, but you have two entrances that I saw on the plans, right, right in the front and the back. Okay, and this is for offices, so-
Sorry, on the microphone, so they could hear you. Thank you.
It's on. The, to me, if it's an office, it's usually a professional type of environment, so-
Mr. Herring, a little bit closer. Maybe if you, can you bring it closer to, yeah, can you-
Oh, moving, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, what kind of like an awning or something you're going to put on, so that people come out of the back entrance, and these are professional people, they're not always dressed in jeans and t-shirts or whatever, and they have to walk along the back, go to the front to get to their cars. Plus, you know, Mr. Riker brought up about the condition back there, is it someplace you want to actually bring clients through to get to your office on the second floor to that area, plus the drive-through dodging cars? Have you thought about that? I mean, because it's raining hard, they have to go out the back, they walk along the building, you know, and then around the corner to get to their cars. People that come out the front have a less of a, you know, a distance to go to their cars, they could probably run there. Have you thought about some kind of an awning or something there? And also some way to keep it clean so it looks professional when you bring people through there? If I was going to have an office and I walked back there, I would probably not be there. Okay, because it's not what I, what I consider a professional office environment, okay, no matter what the cost would be. It'd have to be very, very low, give it a track me to go there, okay? And it's probably lower than anybody I know would want to, you know, charge. So that's my opinion there, because it's going to be professional, make it look professional. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure the architect is hearing you because that's really the person who designed the building.
Mr. Pressley?
Actually, the question's to our professionals. This parking calculation is based on the two restaurants being in there now? Being restaurants require more parking?
It's based on, I'm sorry?
Is this parking, this one, this 189 required, is that based on the two restaurants being in there as restaurants? What I'm trying to get to is if we have two restaurants in there now, and if they add more restaurants later, they're going to require more parking?
Definitely.
Would the applicant stipulate that if they added more restaurants to there, they would come back in front of this board to address the parking for it?
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask you, I'm not going to ask you to answer on the spot for your client. Being that it is your first time, I believe Mr. Shea alluded, we'd like to give you a few minutes, we, I think there's a lot of open questions here from the board to confer with your client. You'll come back and then we'll get to the next, the rest of your witnesses.
Yeah, but I actually, Mr. Pressley's question I can actually answer because it's actually a legal issue. If the restaurants require more parking, we would have to come back to the board if a restaurant took over a retail spot. So that's really not an option for us. We would have to do that because it would create a variance, and I'm sure that it would be picked up by your township officials.
So a condition of approval would be? Anyone else from the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just one more, kind of related to the parking and the, the variance that's required along that property line where you have the 2.5 feet, that's, you know, where the existing drainage basin is that you're going to fill in. So there's not really any reason that I can see why it can't be 10 feet. If you made it 10 feet, those 17 stalls along that line would be, would be pushed out, I'll say five more feet, which would reduce the 24 feet to 19, which we know isn't, isn't going to work. I'm getting to that, if we made it comply, would even lose more parking. I'm saying one, two, three, four, maybe five spaces if that setback to that common property line conformed the ordinance.
Correct, which is why we're requesting the waiver for the three-foot setback.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jennings, are we all finished with this witness? I believe the board is?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to take five minutes to confer some of the open questions?
Sure, I think a five-minute break would be a good idea.
Thank you. Five-minute break, we'll-
You know what, no, if I can, let me just go down the list because we, we got a ton. And I would recommend maybe having about a 15-minute break to confer because this is going to be a lot of stuff, so. Okay, so one thing, hang on, guys.
Please be quiet for one more moment.
Right. You guys are going to have a chance, if we get to your application, everybody's going to have a chance to speak, all right? The meeting is conducted by what's called Robert Rules of Order. Means it's a guaranteed way to make sure that the public has their time to speak. Sometimes it's hard when you're sitting in the room, there's other applications, other people are speaking, other experts, and you're sitting here for a while, but just know that based upon the Robert Rules of Order, you guys will have, you know, your time to speak, to go up to the podium, whether it's cross-examination or general comment, period. Everybody has a right and obligation to speak, and the state of New Jersey has required that. So if everybody could just, just keep quiet while this is all going on, I understand there's some mumbling and everything like that, but we really have to have a clear record, and nobody can make a clear record if we, if there's noise in the background. So if you really want to discuss things, go out in the hallway, have a chat with, you know, whoever you want to chat with or something like that, but we have to have a clear record and you have to have one person speaking at a time, or else what's relied upon for public transparency gets a little tainted, all right? So just understand that, just please keep it quiet. All right, so now going down the list. So you may want to talk to the applicant about trash enclosure and dumpster placement, that's one issue. When have the, the route in and out of the building for individuals, whether employees or pedestrians or people who are shopping there? Crosswalks and curb end delineations, I may want to have a talk with the applicant about that. Crosswalk and pedestrian circulation, just have a chat with the applicant about that. The enlargement of the islands as well. You know, that may be a situation where you might end up losing parking spaces, you can talk to the applicant about that. Additional EV to offset maybe some of the parking spaces for the other considerations. What's that?
Handicap.
Oh, so handicap, but, I believe the handicap's going to be required under the federal ADA obligations. Anyway, but just, just verify that with the applicant to make sure that you guys are federally compliant with, with those standards. The buffer requirements for the trees and shrubberies, I know that in the shade, shade commission letter, that was a big one, and I think we, we have a little discrepancy between, you know, what we have going on there and what's been represented, so just have a chat with the applicant about that. Grading concerns, that is also a major, you know, ADA issue. I understand that the building's been there for a significant, significant amount of time. I, we, quite frankly, we have absolutely no idea when it's, you know, been paved or anything like that, so just keep that in the consideration. And then I believe Mr. Riker brought up, common area issues, maybe in addition of common area space, something to that effect, maybe we'll have a chat with the applicant about that. So I, I would recommend probably about 10 minutes or so, there's a lot of issues that we have to go over with the applicant. Personally, I think about 15, but it's up to you. Do, do 10?
Thank you, we'll leave it five, you know, the board's five. Thank you, we're just going to take a short break. Thank you.
People are here for it, and I think it's a shame for everybody to have to stay here for another few hours, and by then it's not going to be heard. So Ms. Jennings, the attorney for the applicant graciously agreed that we, for the hearing to be moved to another date, because it is quite late, this here, the meeting will be moved to the November 6, 2023 meeting. No notice will be required, so whoever's here, the meeting will, the application for Chandler Holdings will be moved to September 6, 2023. So I'm just going to read it off before we ask, I'm sorry, excuse me, just, sorry, one, be quiet for one more moment, so we could just officially adjourn that application. We have Block 801, Lot 62 and 63, 394 Chandler Holdings LLC, will not be heard tonight, and it will be moved to the November 6, 2023 meeting. And, I'm sorry, we, the hour is very, the hour is late, we didn't realize how long it would take, and we would like to get, give everyone the courtesy for not showing up, for not sitting around for another two hours and not getting heard. So would anyone like to make a motion to move it to the November 6 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Thank you. It will now be moved to the November 6 meeting.
Excuse me.
Ma'am, this is not a public comment.
I understand that.
Right.
May I speak?
No. No.
The meeting is set for November 6.
Now, if you want to stay until the end of the meeting, when we open it up, the public comments, you're more than welcome.
No, no, that's, it, it.
Please, thank you.
I, I fully, fully understand that.
Hey, shut up!
Oh, shut up.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're gonna take, we're gonna take a five minute break, so to calm down any time, so thank you.
Let me explain to you how this operates, okay? We operate based upon the Robert Rules of Conduct. If you guys want to go online, look that up, that's fine.
I'm familiar.
But, but hang on, what happens is that I, I know Mr. Gazarovski very, very well, okay? So I understand that you have an attorney that you paid for. Now, what happens in this situation, there's no way to anticipate this. You can't come into a room and just expect the application to be heard. Unfortunately, there was two before you, and, and both applications are significant. And sometimes the applications take a half an hour, sometimes they take an hour and a half, sometimes they take three hours. There's no way to anticipate that. Now, I know a lot of you guys have come out here, spent your honest time to come out here and do this, and you guys will have your chance to put everything you want on the record, all right?
It would seem to me your scheduling should be a little bit clearer.
Well, that's not, that's not how this works. So I understand that everybody come out, but there is scheduling and there's matters of equity, right, that we have to put on the agenda. I, I would love nothing more than to take the really big ones and put them first, but that is not fair to everybody else. So a lot of these people have submitted applications prior to the Chandler Holdings, vice versa sometimes, all right? But you cannot come in and screaming and expect to get your way, okay, when there is a certain way that we conduct these things. I understand that it's emotional, I understand that unfortunately you're taking time out of your own lives, and, and that is.
Well, I think it would be appreciated if the Chandler Holdings, which had been scheduled once before after the March meeting, had been scheduled once before.
But I, I understand that, I get that.
And changed again because the advocate had issues.
Right, but let, let us just put it to you this way, you guys cannot demand when we put these things on the agenda. That's what the municipal land use law, and that's what the Robert Rules of Conduct, that's how these things operate. That's the law that we play in, that's the, that is the box that we play in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further than that, we start every meeting 30 minutes earlier than we used to, and I think we've added four or five extra meetings in the schedule this year. Yeah, goodbye to you too, sir.
Excuse me, we're, we're gonna take five minutes here, so everyone can calm down. Thank you.
There, there is no public record in this.
Please clear the room, thank you.
Thank you. You will have your chance to talk about everything during, during general comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it's time for you to exit the building. Thank you.
No, 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 we're hearing everything. We're just one, one application. Yes. Actually, plenty of time. See how long this takes. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jennings, your witness, may proceed.
Uh, thank you. Just quickly, uh, we did have a break, we did convene with our client, and they did want to convey a message to the board that they are committed to cleaning up the site, they are hearing all of your comments, um, they are relatively new owners, they want this to be successful, they are going to be working on the regrading, taking care of the drainage, meeting the handicap federally accessibility with the curbing, um, and then I did have, uh, my site engineer take a look at areas where we could, uh, improve some of the landscaping and the curb ADI, and how we're gonna do that with the parking, so I'll have him testify, uh, to that, and hopefully we can continue to move forward.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, so I'll go, I'll go down the list of things Mr. Shea mentioned. Number one was the trash enclosures, we will provide the trash enclosures, we will provide screening for those, they will be placed in a good location in the rear of the building, not along the buffer where they're not allowed within 10 feet, they'll be along the back of the building. Um, the architect will testify if there's any conflict with that and exit routes.
And one, one important thing the architect is gonna tell you, that exit in the rear is an emergency exit only, that is not a main entrance, people are not gonna be coming in and out of there. So that was something we should have clarified, but I'm not the architect, and he's not the architect, and we didn't realize that till we took a break.
Which addresses number two, which was the route for the fire exit. Um, number three is the circulation, which, again, we will be adding striping, uh, the proper signage that is necessary to make sure that there's a clean, safe circulation around the site. Uh, number four was the big one, which was enlarge the islands. Um, we will enlarge the islands, doing so will lose 15 spaces, which brings us down to 164 from 179, um, which should be, which is sufficient, Scott will testify to that, our traffic engineer. Um, we will not be adding any EV spaces, that's number five, we will not be adding EV spaces, I don't believe they're necessary, the extra ones, we'll just do the eight that we proposed originally. Um, handicap spaces, of course, we're gonna be providing, um, which goes to a concern that you had, which was the, the grading, the entire grading is being redone. Once we're doing the parking lot, we're doing it right, it's gonna be milled and paved and regraded. Those curves are gonna be ripped up and replaced. That area that you're talking about has a new proposed handicap ramp, right there, it will be regraded. Um, the buffering, we will provide buffering as we spoke about before, that's number eight is grading. Um, number nine is the common areas with regard to, uh, testifying about the parking, and I'll let the architect attest to that.
Thank you. Now, you're okay working with, I'm sorry, you'll be working with Mr. Clea on the re, you know, on the buffering plan, any trees?
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions for this witness, can we bring up our next witness?
Sure, Mr. Haring.
Yes, you'll be providing us with updated plans, so we can take a look, so you'll be coming back there sometime, hopefully soon with that?
I hope so.
All right. This, that'll be your second time to see us, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we can bring up our architect.
Good job, my friend.
If you please raise your right hand, do you affirm, do you affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please, please state your name, spell your last, and your credentials. Well, you can get the mic to work.
My name is Sherman Greenbaum.
Spell your last, please, for the record.
G-R-E-E-N-E-B-A-U-M.
Thank you.
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, um, I've testified in many, in front of many, many different boards and many jurisdictions. Um, I don't think I've ever testified in front of this board, but I have testified in front of the zoning board for the township of Jackson.
Thank you. It's a night of firsts, may proceed.
I, I'm sorry.
A night of firsts.
Tonight, tonight was interesting. Um, so you're testifying as a professional planner?
Architect.
Architect, architect, gotcha.
Sure, please proceed.
Um, I don't know the exhibit numbers.
No, I don't have the numbers.
Yeah, we're right there.
Okay, so, as testified earlier, we have a, an existing, um, retail center, retail space, that has underutilized parking, which the traffic engineer will speak, will attest to, um, and the clients came to us that they, they would like to, um, enhance the site, and obviously all enhancements of sites require capital to be able to do it, so we need to find a different, different revenue stream in order to be able to, to be able to afford to, to, um, to do the job of, over the entire site, and, and be able to enhance the, the aesthetics of the building. The idea that we, that was posited was to add a second floor, um, of, of office space on top of the retail, and in this way be able to augment the, the square footage and be able to increase the ratables for the, for the site. Um, in doing that, obviously, we would have to lose a portion of a, of a single retail space on the, on the ground floor, which would be our main entrance. Um, that entrance would be what is fairly typical for 16,000 square feet of, of office space, which would be a small lobby, a mailroom, a generous closet, elevator, and stairs. I do know that there was some conversation earlier about the rear steer that we have, being that it is an office space, we are required to have two means of egress from the office. Typically, that second means of egress, and especially due to all the concerns that you, the board members were bringing up, um, nobody wants that rear, rear entrance used as an entrance, it's actually an emergency egress only, and would be, would be, um, treated as such with, uh, it would be locked on the, on the outside, it would have a panic bar on the inside, um, just literally for emergency situations, in which case the fire department would be there. You know, there was a question about the pedestrians with, with the fire department, it's, at that point, we're all in the same, same boat, everyone's trying to save everybody, and the need for sidewalk at that point would, would not be necessary, because that entire area would be hardscaped, um, and pedestrians would be able to, to exit the building and get out. I know there was a question about it exiting towards the south versus exiting towards the north. I, I believe that by code, and by fire, fire code, once you're out of the building, you're out of the building. There is, the, the engineer testified earlier that there was about 40 feet of space at the rear of the building, that's more than adequate, um, to be able to safely, um, to safely exit the, the occupants of the second floor. Um, the ground floor, um, from a plan view, if we go to the second sheet.
Just for the record, we're looking at what's been marked as Exhibit A3, as a four plan set.
So if we move to the second sheet within that set. So over here, we have basically what the exist, what the existing layout is in the ground floor, we're taking the, these, the first portion of the middle tenancy, and we are, which I believe currently, I don't remember 100%, but I believe it's more of an office use, current, um, as it stands, and we are, um, creating our lot, our entrance lobby, stairs, and elevator, um, at that point. All the rest of the tendencies, the demising walls, everything else remains the same. Um, I do believe that there has been a question earlier whether the building would remain in operation while the construction was happening. We did have a structural engineer look at the building, um, the current building is, can handle the second floor on top of it, the way it was built, the structure is strong enough. Obviously, whenever we do, we're in a construction zone, safety is a concern for occupants of the building below. Um, obviously, we would be working on our plans to create some sort of safety plan, um, and the contractor would be required to provide any protection of any entry areas or any, any areas where pedestrians can be, and obviously staging of their equipment would be something that we would be looking for in our discussions with the GC, to make sure that that would be adequately taken care of. This is not the first building that is a retail center that has a second floor added to it. Um, there's a system that, that contractors use, whether it's sheds or fenced areas. I'm not gonna say the operations are gonna be 100%, you know, exactly the way they are now, I'm sure that there are gonna be certain down, downtimes in which work is gonna have to happen, that the stores would have to close down for a week, that would be something the operations, um, the, the owners of the building would have to work out with their tenants at the time. If we move on to the, um, to the second floor, the next page. So, over here, we laid out a, a generic, um, what we would consider the, the typical type of tenant that would want to be in such a building. We're finding that generally a 2,000 square foot, a tenant that's looking for 2,000 square foot of space would be agreeable to go into such a building. Obviously, this parlay's itself into some of the conversation about parking, because the types of tenants that would be willing to come into a retail space are the types of tenants that are typically lighter usage, they're not typically those tenants that would have people that, um, that have constantly come to, that constantly need parking to come and visit. It's more the people who work there, they come in the morning, they work there the whole day and they leave, and that we're typically finding, and I know that you as a board can't necessarily work on this type of assumption, but we're typically, we are typically finding that these tendencies are typically lighter use, um, tendencies in which there are, you know, six, seven people working at a max in, in these spaces, um, and, you know, that's usually what we're finding. It doesn't mean that they're limiting themselves to that, but we, we, we set up this, this floor plan to be able to work with that 2,000 square foot tenant. Obviously, if someone wants a larger space, it's possible, but, you know, one of the things that we look at when we're designing an office space is to make sure that the egress from the building will, will remain legal, and that, that determines our placement of our stairs, how far apart they are from each other. We have to take in consideration that and corridors, two means of egress, separation of egress. So basically, when we set out, to set out our tenancy layout, it's, it's, that is sort of limiting to the, to the type of tenant that can go there. It's either an, in this case, it would be either, you know, half a floor where someone would take the, the bottom L, and the right L, or they'd have to take, um, the corridor would have to remain a solid corridor through this entire space. Obviously, given, given the parking requirement and the limits on the parking requirement, we did not fill out the entire building, um, with, you know, end to end. We did leave some areas marked as occupied roof. Um, I don't believe that as much as mark, as marked as occupied roof over here would actually be occupied, because there is equipment needs for the lower floors, um, that would have to be in some of these areas. We, if we do need that, when we go down further in our investigation, obviously, those would be saved off, they would be blocked off from anyone using those occupied roofs. Um, the use of these occupied roofs is more of an amenity space for each individual, of the individual tenants that are there. Um, there seems to be a trend today in office space, that there's some demand for some sort of outdoor terrace or outdoor space, but we find most, it's mostly used for bragging rights, or, um, actually, sometimes people are using it to take private phone call or something that I, that effect. It's not, in no way an assembly space or a place to, to gather, it's more of a, a, an amenity space to have that outdoor possible meeting or, or that view that feels that you're not in the corporate environment, so to say. Um, so over here, we have basically six tendencies, um, and there was a question earlier about the, the square footage of the common, common area. I'm right up there with you, in your suggestion that the common area spaces are not utilized the same way that the other spaces, actually, what we call non simultaneous, non simultaneous use spaces in industry. Um, so that, when we total together the staircases, the lobby space, mailrooms, and the bathrooms, which arguably none of those spaces would be adding tenants to the building, we are reducing our footprint by about, I have up here about 1,600 square feet, give or take a couple of feet. Um, that, that brings us to generally the, the floor plan layouts. Now, if we go back to the first page, I typically find that, that understanding of elevation is a little bit easier in, in perspective. is a little bit easier in, in perspective. So if we go back to the first page, we're obviously bringing a little bit of more modern, up-to-date spin on the building. There was a question about canopies, obviously canopies are to us as architects, something that are crucially important to a retail and an office space. Just think about going out there in the rain and having to close your umbrella, not having any, not having anything protecting you. So typically, we would, we, we will try to add awnings into almost anyone, any of our designs. We try as much as possible to keep continuity of, of awnings throughout the entire retail area so people can go from place, from space to space. Over here at the Dollar Tree, which we, which we anticipate would probably be its own market, we did not carry that, that, that has its own separate awning. So if someone was going from one of the other stores to the Dollar Tree, they would have to open their umbrella to move over. But it's, it's a pretty large tenancy, and we, we sort of blended in the office entry into the rest of the facility, using the same tones that we're using for the Dunkin' Donuts, which is actually the more up-to-date Dunkin' Donuts designs, and we took our, our office entry, we used the same wood tones at that area and used this, this arch framing type of effect on the rest of the building to relate the, the office to the retail and create a unified facade.
Any questions? Sure, Mr. Herrick.
Yeah, the, those existing roof parts that you said could be opened out, somebody go on there, is there going to be some kind of railing around? So if people do go out there maybe for lunch or you said for gatherings or whatever, you know, because they know usually buildings, roofs, you know, it might only be this high in there and somebody could stumble and fall over there and it could be quite a calamity. So you anticipate those open roof areas to be some kind of a railing or something around it? So people maybe can look out, but they can't fall off.
Yeah, so if we look at the image that you're looking at right here, the railings are quite obvious, we have those railings between. We have the, we have the railings running from the parapet Dunkin' Donuts to, to, to the front facade and along the rear, and in this area on top of the Dollar Tree, which we created this sort of pergola area, there's, there is a railing there as well around the entire edge of the building. That railing would be a code compliant 40-inch minimum railing from, from top of roof surface.
Yeah, I can see it. It's hard to see, you know, eyes get a little bit worse the older you get, but yeah, I can see it now, it kind of sticks out. So the key people.
Building, building code requires it as well.
My usual question, solar.
We have not spoken to the, to the ownership about that. Obviously, mechanical equipment is always, is always a, is always a question, the balance of mechanical equipment towards solar. I don't see why we can't do solar.
Good. Thank you.
I just want to say, it looks like you designed a very nice decorative building, it's a very prominent corner in Jackson, not sure if you, you know, you drive by there, there is a lot of traffic there, there is other, the board has approved other, you know, more modern buildings in that vicinity, and, you know, I just want to say, thank you for giving us something we could be proud of.
You're very welcome.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Greenbaum, you took into account the non-simultaneous use spaces. The $50 question is, 1,600 square feet-ish equates to X parking spots?
I believe it's eight, eight spots.
So your testimony is positive eight spots?
Positive, now if you want to take it to the other degree, and I, I could take out the hallways as well because that's technically non-simultaneous as well.
I gave you the bandwidth, I gave you the bandwidth, I was pretty keen.
We're good, we're good.
I'm not going to give you the hallways, but thank you. And just because the retired construction manager may want to know, what are you going to do with the waste stacks when they're up on the decks? How are you going to deal with that? Plumbing waste stacks?
I'm, I did not hear your question.
All right. Every roof has penetrations, your sewer, riser, waste stacks penetrate the roof, they smell wonderful when you're on the roof. I don't think they're going to smell great on the deck, so how, how are we going to address that? Move it to the back of the building?
There are traps in those waste stacks that are possible, and the highest point to the building is actually over the office area, so we can bring those waste stacks. There's minimal waste stacks from below, so that, we can route them through the higher part of the building, so they wouldn't be near any occupants.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Historically, Mr. Wall isn't here, but historically, since I've been here, oh, there he is, historically, I'm answering this, asking this question, there was a serious fire in that particular Chinese restaurant that's there now, and there are, if you can't, Dunkin' Donuts Chinese restaurant and the Italian place that's there now. What are your considerations about firewalls above buildings with restaurants in them? That's a concern.
So we, we run, the I B C governs any of these, any, any such requirements. I do not recall at the current moment, I do believe that this building is a Type II B building, but I don't know that for sure right now. I believe that it's a.
I'm just thinking of that exterior wall on the far side where the, where the three restaurants are now. I don't know what the future holds for those restaurants, I, I'm not saying that I do. What I'm concerned about is if they are still there and you plan to have an open space above that, that wall will be a wall where I know there was a serious fire previously.
So building code takes fire, fire, fire considerations extremely seriously with fire stopping and, and types of building materials allowed in such a, such a mixed-use building. We'd be following all codes to the letter of law in designing this building. Can I tell you exactly now what that would be? I, you know, we, we first need to have an approved building to be able to do that research, but every one of our buildings is, is, is designed to, to law requirements.
Do you believe that, do you believe that it'll be an upgrade from what's there today from the previous code?
As, as required, definitely. I can't, you know, the, the current codes, every, every code iteration is more stringent than the one before it. So we're currently up to 2021 code, which both in energy and in fire code got a lot more stringent, and we are adding a new use to the, to the second floor, which would require multiple separations, you know, and/or sprinkling depending on what we need.
And just to be clear, so, because I bumped into this issue a little while ago, technically, because you're making these additions and architectural changes, you're technically giving up the grandfathering of the old, of the old codes and now being restricted by the new ones, which are obviously a lot stricter. So just so the board is aware that they're, they're purposefully giving up that grandfathering, that technically they could use it, you know, beneficially in their favor, so that's one aspect to take a look at it.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you. Mr. Greenbaum, the emergency access you spoke about, first, is that the only place in this layout that it can be? Is there any place that gets people who have to leave that space closer to a safe route?
So as you were mentioning it, I was thinking about the possibility, I, I have to look at the riser headroom issue, but I was thinking that it would be very easy to keep these there in the same location and exit, and just switch the door to the other side. I, I have to double-check my head heights over there to make sure that we would be code compliant with head height exit.
What about taking the entire plan and just flipping it?
You mean, um.
Putting the main entrance towards Bennett's Mills and putting the emergency access towards Dunkin' Donuts?
I believe current tenant considerations would be, I believe that the current tendencies that are existing in, in the building would be, would be one of the issues that, that we have on that.
So this is the only place this can go?
We can look at other opportunities, this is definitely the most efficient place to go, from, both from a code and a practice standpoint.
I, I think both of us have some homework to do about safe routes. Getting outside in an emergency and being in a parking lot, I, I might not agree with you that that's the end of. So I think you have some vocal work to do and I have some fire department work to do. I would strongly suggest you consider how people are going to get someplace safe from there. They'll just leave in the back of a parking lot during emergencies.
They're going into fires.
They have to walk someplace, they're going to go find their car. How are they going to get to the front of the building? I just, I, I'm not buying the testimony that, that your only responsibility is to get them outside the building.
No, they have to have a route to the street, not to the car, and they're going into a fire lane.
Fair enough. This occupied roof amenity space, it's meant just for the tenant that's associated with it?
Yes.
Okay. As a practical matter, the one to the north appears to be 50% bigger than the tenant space. So if your tenant space is 2,400 square feet, that's got to be 3,000, 3,500 square feet, that's, that's the size of this room.
So as I, as I.
For eight employees.
So as I testified earlier, this is currently very schematic. We do believe that a lot of air conditioning units would be taking up a large portion of that space.
I would assume you, you've constructed these somewhere, my, I'm curious to ask you to help the town ensure compliance. What would we, what would a town, you're sitting on our side of the fence, what would the town say to the owner of this property so that there's not a restaurant up there? So that there's not a bar up there?
I think you can just make that a condition of approval if that's something you're concerned about. We don't have any intention of having a rooftop restaurant.
I'm trying to figure out how, how to ensure compliance that that tenant or the rest of the building aren't going to use the roof for something other than an amenity space.
Prohibited to amenity space only.
Can we, can we not have, can we not have any direct access, meaning only through an office to that space?
The, the, the current design that we have is, the doors are only through a tenant. Basically, tenant four accesses the area on top of the Dollar Tree and tenant one occupies, accesses the area on top of the Dunkin' Donuts.
We have as a condition of approval that it's only through the tenant space and not through any hallway?
I don't think there would be a problem with that, I do, we probably would have to give a building ownership man, access for service to machines for the, for whatever servicing to the area below.
Lastly, you had spoken about, and it was a sort of a phrase that you used and I was trying to copy it down, you said you were considering lighter tenancy use, was that for the retail use downstairs or the office space?
The, the office space upstairs.
Okay. So I'm, I'm trying to understand from an engineering perspective what lighter tenancy space is.
So as, as I said, I don't believe that we can bake that into an approval because it's, it's speculation. I'm just telling you based on our experience in designing close to 1.25 million square feet of office space in the general area of, in this area of Jersey, that we're finding the demand towards that.
Would you agree in the state of New Jersey, if you're in a zone that permits the use, you can do whatever you want?
100%.
Thank you, that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
If I may suggest, Mr. Greenbaum, I'm not a fan of John Q. Public being near 480 volts of H VAC equipment or having anything to do with building operations. To that point, what I may suggest to you, on the north side of the building in that Free Publics Place, taking a shoebox in the center but giving them periphery, two-thirds of that space, and then walling off the rest of it for mechanical, screening it so you have a nice seating area, you're not listening to mechanical equipment rumble, nobody's going to be messing around with a 480 disconnect or, you know, sitting on a roof fan or, or whatnot. But I would suggest that in, to keep them away from the back of the house where your electrical services are all coming in, just give it like a, an L-shaped space that you get to enjoy the perimeter, the north side of the building and the front of the building, and I would suggest that on the other side of the building as well. I tend to agree that, you know, your user space doesn't need to be that large, I would argue that it shouldn't exceed 50%, and I would feel more comfortable with like 30% or 35%, but speaking just in terms of public safety, not listening to the equipment, and having a really good space with good use, that's what I would recommend.
So.
The other thing I would do, and I'm not sure if you touched on this, your second floor, your first floor egress off the stair tower, I would invert that 180 degrees so the face is north. This way, they're not walking around that component, they could dump out onto a short sidewalk, it's a straight line, you know, to evacuate, and there's, there's no issue of which way do we run.
So if we, if we could move to the third sheet in the, in the, in the drawing set, I just, so my, our intention is that from that column back, that would be a wall, that whole area would be mechanical space back there. You know, we assume that that would be more than adequate given the clearance is required for the amount of machines, but if you, if you want to limit that to 50% of the tenancy, the hard part about that is that we just supposing this is going to be the tenancy, technically, the tenancy could take this or it could take the entire L, in which case 50% changes. So we, it's tough to make a 50% rule when that changes. I would, I would say that, that I don't have a problem saying that this area back here would be, would be mechanical and that we would have a wall, an acoustic wall, acoustic absorptive wall that would obviously have a keyed entrance for the building maintenance to get into, and our mechanical area would be back there. As to your suggestion about the stair, that's what I was talking about earlier, yes, we can, we can rotate the stair, the issue is that this, this hallway sort of has to be in that location in order to work out with the tenancy. So if we rotate the stair, the stair goes, the stair would wind up eating into our, our loading and unloading zone. So what I would, what I would be trying to do here is, is try to see if, I believe that given the amount of risers that we have here, we would have an aid for clear underneath the, the upper leg of the stair that we should be able to not have a door like we're showing it on the sheet earlier, but actually put the door in this location right there.
Mr. Peters, would, would you be in favor of going into the loading space for a more positive egress? Would that make sense to you?
I think the shortest distance to a safe point is probably the most efficient.
Okay, so it sounds like we would, with, with the sidewalk, if that was inverted, that would be more favorable and a little more lenient on the loading spaces. So that, we're clear here, without the walls being shown, we're kind of at a loss to try to figure what, what it is you want and to try to describe what I call the right color blue. But I'm assuming by the elevation that faces north, that you had railings along the whole north second floor. Is that correct? So if I'm on Bennett's Mills and I'm looking at that, that profile, the side profile of the building, I would normally see people up there on the deck, correct?
So we do, we do have a railing up there.
Okay, that, that's cool. So what, what I'm trying to explain to you is, you don't have to break it off at that column, you can make it L-shaped, come back 10, 12 feet, you still have what you're looking for on that space. You have the view, you have the fresh air, and then you have the same on the front, and then you sectioned off a corner for the hypothetical mechanical space. This way, you have a nice L-shaped door, you know, you don't want to put a chamfer in there, so be it, but you grab your architectural feature, you get to enjoy it. But you grab your architectural feature, you get to enjoy it, and you get the fresh air, and mechanical space is hidden. Win, 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 win.
Understood.
Just so we sum all of that up, let's just abbreviate that for me. Are we going to make that a condition of approval? Where are we going with that? Or is this, you know, board professionals, are we, is this something that we're going to hash outdoor and resolute compliance? Because it was a rather lengthy chat.
Mr. Schiff, I would, yes, I would handle it as a, get it in a resolution.
Right.
But I would also ask for them to stipulate on a deed restriction that it wouldn't be a restaurant, it wouldn't be a place of, Ms. Jennings, pardon me, trying to find the right word. I know it's not assembly, but.
Assembly space would probably cover what you're concerned about.
Yeah, use but not, not public assembly, if you will.
Right.
Wouldn't be reasonable space.
Correct. It wouldn't be, it would be an incidental use but not for public gathering. We, what we're saying is we don't want to see that as an, as a outdoor restaurant or anything of that type of nature upstairs.
Understood. The actual architecture of the building itself currently wouldn't even allow that because these stairs would have to be from within the restaurant and so on and so forth. But I understand the board's concern and we could definitely, I think that that could be dealt with in a resolution.
All right, so just to sum this up, so the amenity areas, condition approvals is going to be, make them just amenities, right? The two open areas upstairs.
Amenities to the tenancies that they serve.
Right, right. So, but the other, the other issue I have is that the condition of approval, are we going to wall off the fixtures that are up there?
We would provide screening and, we would provide safety and acoustical screening for for any rooftop equipment in that area.
And then the avenue by which the people have to go to the amenity areas, are we doing anything condition-wise for that? Do they have to go through another tenant?
Those amenity areas are earmarked for those tenants that abut them.
Okay, so they're just for those tenants and not for the general public or anything like that?
Correct.
Your next witness?
Yep. Bring up Scott Kennel.
Mr. Kennel, finally, not a first. Do you solemnly swear that or affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials.
Yes, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've appeared before this board as well as the Jackson Zoning Board and over 100 other municipalities.
Except for Gracius, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could, Scott, for the record, your office prepared a traffic impact analysis?
Yes, we did. And with the latest date of April 19, 2023.
And if you could just walk us through that analysis and if you could focus on the parking as well?
I will. The first task that was accomplished was conducting extent of traffic counts at the site driveways onto Manhattan and on Bennetts Mills Road. The traffic counts were conducted in December from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. It was determined that the peak hours occurred from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. and 3:15 to 4:15 p.m. The traffic volumes on Manhattan two-way at the site driveways range from 530 in the morning to 780 in the afternoon. Bennetts Mills, as expected, have higher volumes with the morning peak hour approximately 1,060 vehicles and in the afternoon approximately 930 vehicles. Again, that's two-way traffic. The next step was to determine how much additional traffic would be generated by the site with the approximately 16,000 square feet of general office space. The Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual was consulted as recommended by Ocean County and it's the industry standard, and it was determined that during the peak street hour, the additional office space proposed here would generate approximately 25 additional trips during the morning peak hour and in the afternoon peak hour. The next task was to determine how traffic would be assigned to the area roadway network. We took into consideration the existing traffic patterns at the site, the existing roadway network, and determined that approximately two-thirds of the site traffic would be oriented to the Bennetts Mills Road driveway and the balance would be oriented to Manhattan Avenue. Consistent with the Ocean County Planning Board protocol, the traffic volumes are expanded to a design year of 2033 and the traffic volumes, base traffic volumes are expanded based on traffic growth data published by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, which resulted in approximately 10% increase in the base traffic volumes. Analyzing the site driveways, the Bennetts Mills Road driveway in the 2033 no-build condition would be a level service D at approximately 26 seconds of delay per vehicle exiting the site. Whereas with the additional office space, that delay increases by approximately one second to its 27 seconds. It's the average delay for exiting vehicles during the morning peak hour, during the afternoon peak hour. The, it's a level service C with the average delay per vehicle of approximately 22 seconds. As far as the Manhattan Street access, it currently operates a level service B and will continue to operate a level service B with the 2033 traffic volumes with average delay of for exiting vehicles ranging from 11 to 12 seconds per vehicle, well within the acceptable traffic engineering parameters. Now, as far as the site plan is concerned and parking, which has been a major item of discussion tonight, the, you've heard testimony as far as what the ordinance requires and what the modified parking supply would be by taking into consideration enlarging some of the islands and addressing some of the other comments raised by the board, where there would be 156 physical spaces based on the state statute. If we have eight EV spaces, it equates to 164 spaces provided. The existing facility and uses, based on my numerous observations, generate a parking demand of anywhere from 50 to 60 vehicles. The additional office space, in my opinion, would generate approximately 70 additional vehicles. So therefore, the, the peak demand can be expected to be somewhere around 120 to 130 vehicles on site. It's important to recognize that, again, we have two types of uses, office and general retail, which do not have coincidental peaks. For example, the restaurant that exists on site, the pizza restaurant, they would have their peak activity or peak parking demand after 5:00 p.m. Generally, that's when the offices are letting out and, and the demand from the office is lessened at that point. There's also the benefit of internal trips, that there'd be someone, office employees that take advantage of the retail uses on site. So taking that all into consideration, it's my opinion that the 156 spaces that were referenced or 164 with the EV credits would be more than adequate to support the the site with both the retail and office uses. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure. Kimball.
I think the exterior speaks for itself. My biggest concern in this particular site is the interior. And again, I live there. I go there frequently. That is a cut-through. And it is a dangerous cut-through from Manhattan to Bennetts Mills. So I'm wondering if there could be, I'm telling you, they come right through, right from down the street, right through and out the other end. And, and it's really a concern. And you take your life in your hands to try to cross on the parking now to get into a store. You have to really watch. I'm wondering if there could be a possibility of putting in speed bumps there. It might solve some problems because it would mean those people wouldn't be bothered trying to cut through there anymore, that they would, you know, make the turn.
To that point, there's already this identified on the plan, a crosswalk. And then Mr. Peters raised the ability to provide another crosswalk sort of mid-block to the building. And you could do, it can be treatments where you do different pavement type, or it could be a, a raised crosswalk that would be a means to, in my opinion, would, if you minimize that cut-through traffic.
Mr. Peters, what's your thought about that, a raised crosswalk?
I was actually hoping.
I'm just concerned about the way the traffic goes through there at speed now.
Yeah, I was actually hoping that he'd give you an answer you liked so you wouldn't ask me. Because I'm familiar with the site.
Do you agree?
Your observation is correct. So I won't embarrass Mr. Kennel by asking him if he's been out there at 8 o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, sitting on Bennetts Mills Road, watching people cut through the site. But if you're out there and, you know, you go to Dunkin' Donuts, you, you see that, as some board members indicated previously, there's a circulation issue because, near the Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru, because Dunkin' Donuts is popular. Which is why I asked if anyone had any approvals for this. There's two alternatives to slow traffic down. One's the raised pavement and the second's relocating the entrance. I'm not sure we want to make it that onerous to get through the site. There's meant to be an efficiency of vehicle movements through the site. But short of enforcement, which is quite frankly, not, not the applicant's issue here tonight, it would be a police department issue. I think that there has to be some differentiation in the pavement, whether it's raised, whether it's different. And quite frankly, I think the the applicant and the owner should take note of it. Because they don't want people using their site as a cut-through. One, they're not spending any money, and two, they're making it less safe. But it's going on out there right now. So I would agree, short of moving the access point off of Manhattan to a place where it would be more circuitous to get through the site, which would slow people down and get them back up to the traffic light, that perhaps either different types of pavement or some sort of tabletop through the site.
I mean, that's, that's something that we could look at and work through with the board's professionals. And as Ernie had stated, you know, as far as looking at relocating the access on Manhattan Street, we'd have to look at grades and things and how that would work. Bennetts Mills, in my opinion, would remain where it is because we have the office driveway across the street, so we want to maintain that kind of four-way configuration. But as far as Manhattan Street, there may be a possibility. It's something that'd be investigated further.
I would say it would be near to impossible with that Dunkin' Donuts there to move that access. But, but you could do differentiation of the drive area. That would seem to me to be the most efficient and safest.
And we could also add pedestrian crossing signs that just, not everybody watches, but it, but it's just an extra measure to identify for pedestrian safety.
Definitely something raised.
Yeah, I think the applicant's okay with raised crosswalks? Yeah, they're shaking their head yes.
A condition.
Yes, there'd be two of them.
A condition will be at least two raised crosswalks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure, sorry, professionals. Mr. Kennel, you sort of gave us a verbal report on shared parking. While I, while I don't ever take any satisfaction in questioning your testimony, I guess I, I want to know what the upper limit would be. How big could this site get before your testimony would be that they don't have enough parking? You said it was 40, 50 for this use, or 70 or 80 for that, it's 110 or 100. At some point in time, whether there's an actual report, a shared parking report, I guess I, I'm trying to understand at what point there isn't enough parking on this site, in your professional opinion?
Well, again, the, the estimates I provide are based on the current, as far as I know, this site is fully leased out and the tenant mix. The reality is, is, for example, Dollar General is a low parking generator, so that again fits well with this, this site. And then we have the, the restaurant use where, in my opinion, the peak parking for the restaurant, I mean, there is a lunch trade, obviously, but as far as the dinner trade would occur after the office peak, when employees are leaving the site. So it's basically taking into consideration the tenants on site as well as consideration for the office-type use.
But respectfully, if it's an NC zone approved use, this board has no jurisdiction over that, correct? I guess I asked Ms. Jennings that. You're going to come back and say it's a permitted use. So I'm trying to find a place.
Well, we did indicate if it was a restaurant, we would come back. And that's really the only one that I would think that would generate traffic as opposed to the other types of uses permitted in the zone.
Thank you.
Ms. Jennings, we're at 172 spaces, but I don't think we added in what we're picking up from Mr. Green.
That's right. He indicated 1,600 square feet. At 200 square feet of space is eight.
So the new number is 180. You want to put that on the record?
Yep.
Yes, I mean, basically, it'd be 180, correct. 181 to be exact, correct.
You're making the job for the planner too easy now. Okay, your next witness?
Thank you.
Great. So we just have our planner at this moment? And hopefully he was keeping track of all the math.
Just, just real quick, the, maybe the applicant, the owner would know this, but the leases themselves, the leases don't have a designated amount of parking spots per tenant, right? No? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. I said no.
No?
Okay. We're going to go no. Jennings, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
My name is Andrew Janiw, J-A-N-I-W. I'm a licensed professional planner, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal in the firm of Beacon Planning and Consulting Services located in Colts Neck, New Jersey.
Except for your credential, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you from this end.
Thank you.
If you could, Andrew, just for the record, you visited the site and the area around the site?
I have.
And you reviewed the plans and corresponded in connection with the application?
As well as all the review letters, yes, I have.
And the township board and its master plan?
Yes, I have.
And if you could, just from your professional planning experience, go through the criteria for the variances that are being requested by the applicant?
Certainly. Can we put up aerial, I believe it's A7?
It's actually A8?
A8. A7. Thank you. So that, just for the board's reference, that is an aerial photograph prepared by my firm with the property outlined in yellow. Just to give it a little bit of perspective, this has actually, it's a winter shot, less vegetation, so you can kind of see how the parking interrelates with the neighboring properties. So the property is located within the township's NC Neighborhood Commercial District. The uses that are on the site and proposed with the second-floor office are permitted within that district. The subject property is currently improved with a variety of retail spaces, including a Dollar General, a Dunkin' Donuts, a package store, a nail salon, a pizzeria, a Chinese restaurant, and a physical therapist. This occupies approximately 21,400 square feet of space. The applicant is proposing to construct a second floor containing 16,377 square feet of gross space, of which approximately 1,600 square feet was testified to by the architect as being called common area. hundred square feet was testified to by the architect as being called common area. The site is located along, with two frontages, along Bennett's Mill, as well as Manhattan, in an area that is predominantly retail and commercial in character. There's medical office across the street, there's a variety of uses to either side of the property that are commercially oriented. The variances we are seeking this evening are for maximum impervious coverage. Sixty percent is permitted within your district. Currently, the site is at seventy-seven percent coverage, so it's already over. We were proposing eighty-seven percent, but I believe with the reduced parking, Mr. Back indicated that he could probably shave off a couple of points on that and bring it to about eighty-five percent coverage, or about eight percent more than currently exists. We are seeking a setback from the non-residential side property line, ten feet's required, three is proposed, and that is along the easterly property line, with the parking space that's going to be constructed over the existing basin. And if you take a look at that, that little triangle off to the right side of the property will be kind of infill parking, and you'll see there is parking directly on the other side. So it'll essentially be parking-abutting parking. And then finally, with the minimum number of parking stalls, let me get this right, one hundred and eighty-one has been determined to be the requirement, and I believe physically we'll be providing one hundred and fifty-six spaces, but with the EV credit, it'll be one hundred and sixty-four spaces. Am I right?
No, we got up to one hundred and eighty-one.
One eighty-one required.
No, one eighty-nine required, we got up to one hundred and eighty-one with the eight spaces that Simone picked up with the thousand square feet.
With the credit, I'm counting backwards the other way, my apologies. Yeah.
It's been a long night.
We're stipulating the how many spots now?
So we will be providing essentially the equivalent of one hundred and eighty-one spaces.
Okay, but then the actual...
One fifty-six.
Right, one fifty-six.
Right, one fifty-six.
Okay.
Yes. So, as indicated, in preparation for this evening, one of the things I did look at was your master plan, in terms of its goals and objectives, and that's important, because when we reconcile any variances, we do have to indicate that we're not doing any harm to your master plan or to your ordinances. Your master plan has stated goals and objectives, and specifically to retail and commercial properties, these include to achieve a pattern and mix of land use that achieve various community planning objectives, including the provision of quality neighborhoods, the protection of natural resources, and economic development of the community, to direct growth in areas suited for land development and away from areas appropriate for resource protection. And again, keeping in mind, this is an improved property within a commercial district, zoned for commercial use, to encourage the use of planning techniques that'll effectively integrate desirable community elements via viable commercial and service uses, resource protection, and open space areas. And again, this is a space that's already improved, and what we're doing, I think, is better organizing the property through this application. And finally, to provide economic development opportunities in areas that are well-suited for such development, that would increase the local employment opportunities and provide a ratable base for the township. And our application does that indeed. The master plan talks about commercial zoning interspersed throughout the township in the NC Zone, and encourages, actually, the NC District to be improved with commercial activities, convenience stores, personal services, and professional offices. Again, we're on point with all the goals and objectives of your master plan. Additionally, to your own goals and objectives within your master plan, we have to reconcile with the municipal land use law. And that's because an application isn't solely for the benefit of the applicant, there has to be a broader community benefit. And in this case, I believe there are four that we advance with this application. The MLUL lists the purposes of zoning by letter, and I believe we are actually enhancing the following. A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of all lands in the state of New Jersey in a manner which will provide the public health, safety, welfare, and moral benefits. And in this case, we are creating a ratable, we are cleaning up a property, we are reorganizing a property, we're bettering the circulation on the property, we're bringing it up to code and properly cited prior, we are taking a property that is grandfathered under an old code and will be bringing it up to modern standards in terms of ADA compliance, in terms of fire requirements. So I do believe we are on point with that goal. G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, both public and private, according to respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all citizens. Again, we are in an NC Zone, the uses are permitted, and your own ordinances encourage reinvestment in property. There was even some discussion by our manager in terms of whether this is appropriate for redevelopment. Essentially, we are rehabilitating and redeveloping a property that has fallen into some obsolescence, if you will. We are better organizing it, it is appropriate in this location because it's already here. I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Mr. Greenbaum's photo of a modern facility here is a substantial upgrade to the way the property appears. The property will be cleaned up, the back of the property will be reorganized and cleaned up. I think we're, no question that we are providing something that is substantially more desirable from a visual aspect. And finally, to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. Again, we are reinvesting and revitalizing existing property. We are using a footprint of a building that's already there, we're adding office to it, it's an efficient use of land. The parking was testified to by our traffic expert in terms of underutilization. We will be enhancing the parking, and it will be more than adequate based on the counts that were taken to this property to serve as both the retail and the new office space. So I think we're on point with not only that, but all four points of the MLUL that I believe apply here. Which brings us to the reconciliation of the variances. What we're seeking tonight is known as a C variance, specifically a C-two variance. The C variances come in two tones. C-one is a hardship, C-two is what's known as the flexible C, or that the benefits of the application outweigh any detriment. We would qualify the relief that we're seeking as a C-two. And under a C-two, we have to reconcile positive and negative criteria. The positive criteria would be that the application relates to a specific property, and indeed it does. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from zoning ordinance requirements, and I cited four instances of same. And finally, that the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any detriment. Again, the benefits of the relief that we're seeking here, both with coverage and with the parking and the setback, are that we are creating a more efficient use of this land, a safer use of this land, and a better organization of the retail space, and the addition of additional opportunities for a ratable, for occupancy with office space, and essentially creating a substantial upgrade of a property that I believe this board cited dates back to the seventies, and my records seem to reinforce that. When we look at the negative criteria, the applicant was demonstrating, one, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and two, that the variance will not substantially impair the intended purpose of the zone plan. With respect to the detriment to the public good, and the way it reads is actually substantial detriment, we have to look at what nuisances are associated with this application. Are we creating additional traffic that won't be tolerable? You heard testimony from the traffic engineer that the traffic levels won't significantly increase, and that the property can handle the traffic with the existing configuration of the driveways. Stormwater, we are reconfiguring the stormwater, we're creating an underground basin, but we will be able to manage the stormwater, and the engineer testified that we can handle the volume of stormwater, both from what's existing and with the additional flow that will be from the additional impervious coverage. Trash, yeah, there was testimony in terms of the reorganization of the trash collection, that there is sufficient space to provide more than ample containers for the types of uses. We will be able to contain that, and we will be able to manage that through private hauling. Noise, these are permitted uses, the noise is anticipated with the zone, both for the type of retail and office spaces that are proposed, so noise is not a consideration. And then finally, just in terms of the overall appearance of the site, we are substantially upgrading the facility. We're better organizing it, I mentioned the benefits of creating the ADA compliance and of creating the better ordinance compliance in terms of building codes. So when we balance this with the detriments and the positive criteria, I think by far we balance towards the positive in this, and that this is a good application, the benefits outweigh the detriments, and that this will upgrade the property and hopefully assert additional reinvestment into the areas, because some of the buildings around there are dated as well, and hopefully, this type of reinvestment spurs additional reinvestment in the area. So in total sum, I do believe it's a good application. In terms of the waivers with respect to the parking and the other issues that were raised in Mr. Peters' letter, I think Mr. Back testified in terms of what we would be able to do with compliance, in terms of curbing and the curb ends, and the better circulation on the site. So to that extent, we are providing what we can, and we will seek the appropriate relief where necessary, where we cannot apply, but we will certainly supplement landscaping and the like in order to further beautify the property.
Thank you, Andrew.
Have a question.
Sure.
That triangle bump-out that goes to the Oahu, that right now is green?
That is the basin. It's a stormwater basin.
Are you planning on converting that to parking? Is that what I heard?
Yes, that's correct. The new parking will be placed over that, and there'll be an underground basin placed.
Okay. There are a number of places that would not fly, Colts Neck being one of them. I don't know how that squares with the master plan, the open space elements, the fostering view sheds, and green areas, and the, because what I heard today was, the impervious coverage is around sixty-some-odd percent is what it was supposed to be, it's already over that...
It's at seventy-seven, correct.
It's already over that to seventy-seven, now you want to push it further to basically pave the vast majority, what, eighty what, eighty-five percent?
It'll come to about eighty-five percent, correct.
So you're gonna take that green area, eliminate it, just so the board understands if you're voting for it, if you do, so be it, but you're gonna eliminate that green area, one of the very few pieces of, an area that could be a view shed, as folks are just driving through Manhattan, right by that street and what have you, instead of just seeing a parking lot. And it's interestingly close to that, I don't know who owns the Oahu, but I would expect that at some point, if it's not already connected, there'll be a connection to that property, because then there's no visual divider, there's no aesthetic, there's no, well, right now it's a detention basin, what have you. But what I look at that is a significant detriment, to me anyway, may not pass legal muster, but to me, to remove an existing area and make it further non-compliant by paving over it, when that's a nice opportunity to actually increase landscaping, make the property more attractive, more attractive to tenants, more attractive to the public, the more parking that you have in there, the more you're gonna have Dunkin' Donuts choke that area, because I still haven't heard a solution to that, if you're planning on moving on this tonight. So I'm just putting it out there, I don't see how adding impervious coverage ties to the master plan in any measurable way, that it overcomes the legal terminology about overcoming the negative impacts. Ivan, can you speak to what I'm talking about?
Absolutely.
And rebut it?
Yes, absolutely, and I respectfully disagree. Your ordinance provides guidance in terms of protecting of the view shed, and that guidance is that there should be a twenty-foot setback to any parking from any road right-of-way. The way the parking is configured in the new layout of the property is, we are providing a compliant twenty-foot setback to parking. So regardless of whether we meet or don't meet the impervious coverage, your ordinance sets guidelines for what should be protected along that view corridor, along the right-of-way, and we're complying with that. And in fact, we testified this evening that we will be further enhancing the landscaping there with shade trees and shrubbery along that twenty-foot setback, more so than it is today. I mean, today, it's essentially a depressed green area, which, as you drive by, you really don't see, because it is a basin that sometimes has standing water in it, sometimes doesn't, but is prone to be very poorly vegetated, because it is a basin. We are enhancing the frontage along Manhattan, and yes, we are asking for additional coverage. However, we are offsetting the increase in coverage with the proper stormwater management, with additional stormwater management to handle that flow, and that's the offset to that. So again, with any application for variance relief when you're dealing with additional space, there are the balances, and that's why we had to adjudicate this under the balance test. We are asking for eight percent more additional coverage, we are bettering the parking, we more than amply park the property, we're improving the circulation, we're improving the interior of the lot, even though we're not meeting the letter of the law in terms of the coverage, we're providing better circulation, we're providing the ADA access, and all that happens because this application is before this board.
Just to clarify something, you mentioned a twenty-foot setback, is that the ten setback, moving it to three, can you, which, how does that tie together? You mentioned, you're also looking to go from a ten-foot setback to three, to what, the adjoining property?
That is...
Yeah, so I think we should go to the exhibit, it might help.
Sure.
I think it's Exhibit Eight, Four.
Try to square that with the twenty-foot setback you mentioned.
The twenty-foot is along Manhattan.
Right, so whereas you're driving, you'll see it when you're on Manhattan, the twenty-foot setback. Go to the colored rendering of the site plan.
There you go. So the three-foot setback occurs along the southeastern property line with the former Oahu. You can see the Oahu parking up against that area?
So right in the area where the drainage facility was, is now parking spaces that are backing up to parking spaces. And green is now along Manhattan, with trees and the twenty-foot landscaping.
First off, over the years, I've watched the beginning of retention and detention basins, and most of the time, they come out like crap. To take that basin and turn it into piping and move the water properly is an expensive proposition, number one. And number two, I think is the best way to do it in the future.
You're right, it is not a cheap solution.
Those detention basins, just throw mosquitoes, bugs, and you can see every weed and creation growing twenty feet in them, and they're never really maintained, especially that one. So I really think that, in all honesty, I understand saving green and stuff, and agree with the administrator, however, in this case, I think it's a huge improvement to go underground and move it properly through the pipes and fix it.
Now, I'd agree, and not trying to testify as an engineer, but knowing enough about stormwater management and best management practices, the underground basin is actually a significant improvement in terms of water quality over a surface basin as well.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open up to the public, if anyone would like to speak on this application, and this application only, please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and spell your last, and your address, please.
Edward Bannon, B-A-N-O-N, from Twenty-two Abercorn Court. I do want to agree with Ms. Campbell, and in her reference to this being a Speedway here, that we take this entrance and shift it to the next set of aisleway here, just another twenty feet over, to stop that, to make that movement, have to do this kind of a movement through the parking lot in order to get back out the other side. So we'd essentially just be moving that north entrance from Bennett's Mills, north on twenty feet to that next area of the driveway there.
I think our traffic engineer testified that that lines up with the driveway directly across, so that we would then make it uneven. I don't think that's a good idea from getting into and out of both sites.
I believe the board professionals were confident, were at least okay that the two raised walkways will really essentially accomplish the same job, kind of slow cars down, make it not worth it for them to go through.
This would be in lieu of not having to do any of that rumble strip or anything, like those bus speed bumps or anything across the middle, that you'd just be able to move the flow of traffic, one more parker row.
You can't move the driveway across the other side, so the only way we can remediate it is to raise the walk, the crosswalks, two raised crosswalks will slow that traffic. We can't move the entrance and exit egress because of the driveway across the other side of Bennett's Mills. I believe that's what you said.
Yes, and if I could add, what happens also is then that driveway...
Yes, and if I could add, what happens also is then that driveway moves closer to the Wawa driveway and moves closer to the signalized intersection. It's my opinion that it's placed at the proper location, given the other driveways and area and the location of the traffic signal.
Thank you. Mr. Bressi?
Okay.
I totally respect your opinion, however, I think if you did something like that, you're going to force these speeding cars through. Instead of going just straight across, they're going to start cutting through the parking area going that way, and it's going to be a bigger hazard because you're forcing them to go through the parking stalls. So, I think the raised pavement, whatever you'd like to call it, is the better way to go.
I just thought it was from an approach of cutting through and trying to stop the people from cutting through, they do make it harder for them to do, and then they would eventually go up to the light and make the turn.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Jannu, is that one of the positive criteria?
It does.
Thanks. Sure. Thanks for coming forward, please raise your right hand. You soundly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Eric Jones, J-O-N-E-S, 722 Heisen Road.
Thank you.
Now, I was looking at this plan, and I've seen several Dunkin' Donuts, whether they be in Tom's River or Lakewood, but a lot of times, they route Dunkin' Donuts traffic behind the building. Is there enough space behind the building to reroute the Dunkin' Donuts? Because I'm telling you, when you try to get in there, I drive a big truck, I have to drive up against, into the traffic coming the other way. If somebody was to come out from behind the building, I have to block them so I could turn to get into the drive-up. And if you go over there and you look at the wall of the Dunkin' Donuts, it is totally gashed up. Everybody's ramming into that thing. So, my plan, if I would do this, if there was enough space behind the Dunkin' Donuts, I would one lane from the, does anybody have a pointer? Monica?
The other make it prepared.
Sorry. Now, you see this lane here? If you were one-way this, like he was kind of saying, if you one-way this, and then you move this traffic, like, I don't know why everybody's into straight parking and not angled parking, why isn't there parking up against this wall like this wall? You know what I'm saying? You see that wall there, they got parking? Why isn't there like parking, you make this one-way, angle parking, so people can only go this way, and then you take this entrance and you make people go around the other way to go back out? But you have all angled parking, you wouldn't have to take this space here and remove that retention basin, because you're single-laning and single-laning. You're not double-laning, 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 you're double-laning the whole entire place. And then you take Dunkin' Donuts, if they were to come here, they'd go around, go around the back, get your donuts, and the same thing here, you turn in, get your donuts, and go around the back. I have a drawing if you'd like to see.
Mr. Kettle, would you like to respond? Thank you.
I'm just sitting here looking at this thing, and it's just like, there should be space because if you have space behind the building for like a fire truck or trash trucks, you probably could fit, you know, regular Dunkin' Donuts traffic behind there. I see it done all the time.
Thank you. We'll have Mr. Kettle respond to that.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. As far as the drive-through and having the drive-through lane towards the west side of the building, it would cross across a number of other tenants, you'd have to review the fire zone, loading zones, and so those things, it'd have to be investigated, but I would expect that there would be conflicts with those type, with the loading and fire zones. The other comment as far as one-way aisles and angled parking, the most efficient circulation pattern, especially for commercial development, is two-way aisles, and when you go to angled parking, believe it or not, you end up with a lower parking yield. Right-angle parking provides the best maximum yield of parking, based on my forty years of doing this.
Thank you.
But you're double-lane, you have traffic on both ways, I'm having traffic on one way.
Thank you.
Stall, stall, one lane.
Thank you.
And you increase by taking away one lane. You know what I'm saying? Never mind, you're the expert.
Thank you so much.
I understand the comment. I burned many brain cells looking at different alternatives, and angled parking over the years is not as efficient as right-angle.
Okay. Chair, please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you present will be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name, spell your last.
Deborah Jones, J-O-N-E-S.
Address?
Same address, 722 Heisen Road.
Thank you, you may proceed.
I just have a question about the rooftop. Like, I get, I'm all for, I've been in Jackson my whole life, I'm all for improving it. I'm a little disheartened that Jackson is becoming more a city than a township. If personally, if I wanted to live in a city, I would have moved to New York, Jersey City, one of them, Jackson's quickly becoming that. But then, when you talk about rooftops and it's only for the tenants, and I get that, but if the tenants are up there, God forbid there's a fire at the door, how are they getting out? Is there outside stairwells? And if there is, how are we preventing people from using those rooftops when the offices are maybe closed? There's, that's a lot of question for me, if someone's, I don't care if they're in a meeting or having lunch and a fire starts, how are they getting out?
Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum. Yeah, so rooftops, again, they're governed by code, they do have to have a means of egress from them into the tenancy that it serves as a legal, a legal exit. It's no different than if you had an additional room there from a fire code perspective. So, it's, especially up here, you're one story up, it's not crazy, you know, as you'd go higher up, they'd have more stringent requirements, but over here, we're not doing anything that's not code compliant and governed by code.
I know, I'm not asking that, I'm just asking, how are people getting off the roof? Because one story up or not, I'm not jumping, so.
So, you want to know if there's a fire in the building and-
No, no, well, yeah, if it's blocking the doorway for them to get out into the office, how are they getting out, outside the building?
So, God forbid if someone's in an individual office and there's a fire at the door to that office, we're in the same problem. We can't make stairs from every single office down. So, this outdoor amenity space is the equivalent of having a conference room that has a single door outside the conference room. It's not any different than that, you know, unfortunately, can we always dream up scenarios a hundred percent, but if we would do that, we'd be in trouble.
Right, and I believe that the, just going towards this, because I had the same question before, the applicant agreed his condition that the amenity space is only going to be for the tenant, correct?
Right.
So, if that's the situation, the, I'm correct, if I'm wrong with the board professionals, but the, they would have to comply with the fire department, their whole comment list to make sure that the tenants that are within that, that would have the area for the amenities, would comply with the outside agency approval of those people being able to get out of the building. So, it's not necessarily right now that we have an issue with the general public going out there, because it's going to be a condition of the approval itself that they, the general public can't go. So, really, I mean, it boils down to, I think we, you know, the applicant's experts trying to get to is that it's really just to the tenants, and I mean, yeah, I mean, they have to comply with fire safety and all of those outside agency approvals to make sure that nobody's going to burn alive. So, that's, I mean, that's pretty much the gist of it.
All right, well, to simplify my question, is there going to be a stairway from the rooftop to the ground for someone if they're up there?
No, through the chair. Okay, there's a concept called area of refuge that happens in many buildings.
Okay.
I'll give you the example. If someone's on the second floor in a wheelchair, God forbid, elevator's off limits.
Mm-hmm.
What do you do? So, in some buildings, they build what's called an area of refuge in the stairwell where somebody can get into an area where they're in a safe, smoke-free chamber. This deck is utilized as an area of refuge so that, God forbid, let's say a truck crashed into the back of the building and took out the stairwell, the power got cut out, and, you know, it just hit the bed. You have a substantial area on both sides of the building where people can evacuate to as an area of refuge. You see this happening more and more in buildings, specifically for the handicapped or the disabled. So, you know, is there, is there a chute in the ladder? No, but it becomes a safe area for rescue.
Okay, that's-
That's the best way I could explain to you, without overriding the architect, but utilizing my construction manager.
I mean, I'm not arguing the fact of it, I just want to know if it's a safety issue.
But it becomes-
But if they have an area, then I can respect that.
It does become an inherent benefit, not that I'm testifying for the applicant. It's a built-in feature.
You said it very well. Mr. Jannu, your job is becoming easier and easier.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward, I move to close the public portion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Jannu, would you like to close?
Just very quickly, because I think we've heard a lot of testimony this evening, I just want to reiterate that the applicant is committed to really bringing this site up to modern day, repurposing it, really improving the grading, the drainage, the aesthetics, and we respectfully hope that the board grants an approval.
I just want to ask our professionals if they have any recommendations, if they object to, sorry, I just want to turn it over to our professionals if they concur with what they've heard tonight, if they have any objections.
I think there was a lot of discussion specifically related to the parking and these increased islands. I'd like to see, look, a revised plan, I think it's recommended to the board that they see a revised plan so they know what the parking deficiency is and, you know, and physically see the representation that the applicant's made.
Do you, are you comfortable, is that something you think you could do in resolution compliance, or you think that's something that is too vague at this point?
Always more like a CYA, and you know, when it's something, when it gets approved, whether, how did this happen? Well, Doug Clee said it was okay.
You know, this board has a lot of trust in them.
You know, we're going to say it again.
Yeah, I know.
I would trust these two professionals, if they say it's a go, it's a go. And I hate to elongate something that's already been pretty long. We've heard a lot of testimony, we've made a lot of comments, we've gotten a lot of agreement, and I think that if we can, you know, rely on these gentlemen, if they say it's okay, for me, it's okay.
I'm comfortable trusting Mr. Clee with a lot.
Fair enough.
Mr. Bressi?
You know, if it's all stipulated to what it really went through, I had a lot of mixed feelings through this application. I will tell you, your professionals, including the new boot guy there, he spoke up clear better than so many professionals that have been there forty years, and he answered questions right up front, and I really give him a lot of respect for his meeting. But after all the professional testimony, the key point here was their seventy-seven percent impervious coverage already. I think the sewage, the stormwater management is super. Hearing everything back and forth, given the improvements to the facility, to the township, and what it does in the master plan as far as improving and rebuilding, I really think it's a plus. But I think with all the stipulations, I got to depend on our attorney to get it in the resolution correctly, that this could be moved forward with.
Mr. Chair, I just want to second Mr., I don't think, was that a motion, Mr. Bressi?
No.
Oh, okay, fine. So, I also want to just reiterate that also I have a lot of trust in our two professionals, and I would be very comfortable with that, as long as everything's stipulated in the resolution. Would you hear from Mr. Herring?
Yeah, I happen to agree with Mr. Clee, I think we need to see the updated plans, okay? We cannot delegate to our professionals things that are actually the responsibility of the board, okay? They're not the board, we're the board. We need to see this in front of us to make sure we can make the right decision, okay? Just suppose, for instance, some of the things that have been talked about is misconstrued, come up with something totally different than what we actually planned. We need to actually see in black and white, you know, we can talk a lot, but show us the facts, show us what we're actually going to approve, okay? Not by stipulations or whatever, because they're just text. I want to see a plan that I can actually see and show where all these little pieces are.
Just to answer that, Mr. Herring, so if I, within the resolution, I mean, we have a significant amount of stipulations and conditions of approval that they've agreed to. So, if the plan doesn't reflect all, like, everything that they've stipulated to here as a condition, they would have to come back.
It wouldn't be in the resolution in place.
So, they would, just to let you know, so, I mean, and they would be the gatekeepers, so they would take a look at the revised plans and say, listen, this doesn't match up or marry up to the, you know, conditions and stipulations, they have to come back.
Well, here's a question.
Yeah.
How about if, if we're going to approve something, approve only a preliminary, but not final, until they come back with the plans? Then we could approve it from there or not?
Right, so, they're here for, you know, both, so I will leave it up to the board on that.
It's up to us to decide whether they get over.
No, I, yeah, no, I understand, so, but that's kind of a board decision at that point.
Mr. Chairman. Sure, Mr. Sullivan, sorry.
Yes, there's no doubt in my mind that this is inherently beneficial improvement to a existing structure that is quite out of date, and the improvements that are being made to the drainage will benefit the other property owners as well, I feel. We have to trust in our professionals, and I do trust in our professionals, that if what we approve does not come to fruition, that they would then come back to us. So, to me, I have no problems approving this with the stipulations in place.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we can make a motion?
Does anyone have anything else?
All right, are we out of motion?
I'll make a motion.
What did I say, sorry?
I asked a question.
Mr. Riker.
I said, are we out of motion?
Make a motion to-
All right, I'll let Mr. Bressi go first.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to steal the mic.
Based on what I said earlier, with all the testimony and some actually showing me the differences and so forth, and I don't want to say how many years, I know these two professionals, so I trust them a hundred percent, that if don't come back right, they'd be right back at us. Mr. Shay will write it up appropriately, and I'd make a motion to approve with all the stipulations.
I'll make a motion in a second to approve. Thank you for not pressing. I would like to see a copy of the plan, just the site plan, come back to the resolution when we get the rest, just for our benefit, just to read it over.
Thank you.
That being said, I think everything that the applicant's offering, this new curbs, new out, new created, new paving, new facade to the voided mall that really could have been done ten years ago, is a step in the right direction, so I move with the affirmative.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bressi?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, and just to reiterate what Mr. Riker said, I would like, from now on as well, anytime something like this comes before us that needs redress, that we be sent the finalized documents when they're done. With the resolution, yes.
Mr. Marzon?
No.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Excuse me, what about me?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herring.
I'll put no, I believe, without seeing the plans, we're getting basically a pig and a poke.
I concur with you, Lynn.
Thanks, I believe that Mr. Heller's vote, just for the record, I believe he's acting as alternate tonight, so that wouldn't count. Yes, and I just want to, you know, I do like when people come to repurpose existing structures instead of knocking down more trees and, you know, really maximize what's here, so, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a great night, everybody.
Now, Mr. Pfeffer.
Is the board, is the board okay starting this and seeing how it goes? Okay, Pfeffer.
Robin, you waited a long time.
I don't-
Are you kicking me out, Robin?
Adam, not you.
You finally kicking me out?
What time we going, Michael?
Forty-five.
Can I take your minute?
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Yeah, you could go. We have nine still. And Mr. Clee, would you like to get it started? Sorry, I'm sorry. While we're waiting for this, ah, there we go, finally there.
I'm going to wait a second, I don't want your stuff, I just don't want your stuff.
Sorry, I'm sorry. While we're waiting for this, ah, there we go, finally there.
In a second, I don't want your stuff... I just don't want your stuff.
Yes, we have a change of attorney due to a conflict. Just let the record reflect that Mr. Shea will not be sitting in on this application. Mr. Cleese, I'll have you start off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary and final site plan of Block 4301, lots five and six. The applicant's proposing the construction of a mixed-use building involving 80,700 square, 700 square foot warehouse and an 8,600 square foot offices. There is a variance required for deficient parking area setback to a residential use, and we just need some testimony from the applicant regarding the building coverage and the impervious coverage that they're based on. Right now, they're indicated as being conforming, but those calculations are based on the exclusion of wetland and wetland buffer areas. The site is impacted by the conservation overlay zone, and there is a wetland limit as well as buffer area indicated on the plan. Some testimony from the applicant as far as DEP verification of the wetland limit indicated on the drawings. Some testimony as far as the general operations of the site, specific days and hours of operation, any 24/7 operations is proposed. The applicant has provided a traffic impact study as required by ordinance, some testimony from the applicant regarding the findings of that study. We have received some comments from the Bureau of Traffic Safety, so some testimony from the applicant regarding any issue with complying with those recommendations from Bureau of Traffic Safety. One of the design exceptions that's being requested is two-way driveways are proposed on East Commodore, whereas only one driveway connection's permitted. The application is compliant with respect to the parking requirements. East Commodore is a county roadway facility, so the design will require approval from the Ocean County Planning Board. We reviewed the drainage and grading, take no exceptions. We did provide some technical revisions to the applicant regarding the grading design. We reviewed the lighting and take no exception. Some testimony from the applicant regarding the proposed landscaping and any screening to any residential use adjoining the site. We would note that based on the square footage proposed, the 35-foot screen buffer would be required. That's all this time.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated August 15th. Site's located in the HC zone as well as the conservation overlay zone. Contractors' offices, showrooms, garages, warehouse, and shops are permitted uses. We'll cut to the chasers. Tractor-trailer parking here. Someone needs to explain why we need tractor-trailer parking for contractors' warehousing. How big's the unit going to be? What's the maximum size of a unit? This is meant to be contractors' warehousing, not general warehousing. I don't recall if the statement of operations lists the hours of operation for the site. I had an opportunity to meet, to speak with one of Mr. Stevens' associates today regarding the variance for the setback. Our report is incorrect. Variance relief is from a zone and not a use, so while there is a residential use, it is in the current zone. So there's not a variance required for a residential setback for the parking area on Lot 7. So it would appear that this is a conforming application. We would ask the applicant to go through in some detail the design waivers, because at the end of the day, while this is a conforming application, there may be a little more in this site than can fit on the site without certain design waivers. And I will tell you why I can't find a design standard. I am not a fan of the location of the loading dock. We will have a long discussion about the location of the loading dock facing the street instead of being in the back of the building. That's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, turn on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Peters took off half of my opening statement in that, yes, we agree that there are no variances being sought here. We do have some design waivers. As indicated, the application is for approximately 81,000 square foot buildings, 72,100 warehouse, again, the permitted uses, the contractor warehousing, and additional 8,600 square feet of mezzanine office space. We are in the two zones, the HC highway commercial zone along with the conservation overlay zone. The site in question is approximately 7.7 acres, and we do have Mr. Stevens will walk us through the application. I will note that we have received letters from almost all the agencies, including the Environmental Commission, the Fire Commission, and I believe we also have preliminary approval from the JTMUA. This also, I'll knock it out in the beginning, the applicant has no issue with solar to, at a minimum, for the outside lighting and whatnot, and we will obviously look to see what additional we can, but we'll get that out of the way. That could be a condition should the application be approved. At this time, we can answer Mr. Stevens.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you present before the board with the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
William Stevens, S-D-E-V-E-N-S. I am the Vice President of Professional Design Services, and I am also a professional engineer and a professional planner licensed to practice here in the state of New Jersey, and I have been appearing in that capacity in front of this board for many decades.
You're giving engineering and planning testimony tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Mr. Stevens, if you can, just walk us through the application, and then we'll jump into the exhibits and the reports.
I'd be happy to. So the application, as was stated in the opening remarks by both your professionals and Mr. Pfeffer, is to construct a contractor office, garage, shop, and warehouse facility, which is a permitted use here in the highway commercial zone. The subject property is located along East Commodore Boulevard, known as Block 4301, lots five and six, and it does contain approximately 7.6 acres. It is shown on Exhibit 1, which is on the board, an aerial photograph prepared by my office, which shows the subject site highlighted in yellow. It is proposed to be developed. On the, exists, on the site now exist two single-family homes which are proposed to be removed for the construction of this proposed commercial use. It's located, as I said, along Commodore, which runs left to right on this map, and then Cedar Swamp is located just to the left of the property. This is Glories, is right here at the intersection, so everybody knows where they are, and just, it's just to the south of 195, is off the map, as well as the Matita Cock National Golf Course. So we know where we are, and as we said, the property is in the highway commercial zone. We do not believe we are requesting any variances for this application. However, as Mr. Peters did state, there are several design waivers we're seeking, which we'll get to a little bit later. It is in the conservation overlay zone, so as is required by ordinance. We do have a valid LOI from the state of New Jersey that was issued on January 23, verifying the lines as well as the buffers. The buffers along the eastern line and the rear of the site are classified as exceptional resource values, which means they have a 100-foot, 150-foot buffer, excuse me. So what happens is it ends up constraining the site quite a bit. We are going back to the DEP to ask for an averaging plan approval, which means that we have the ability to add to the buffer in some areas where we can move it around to create this developable footprint that we show on this plan. And that application is currently out to DEP, is currently pending. Mr. Peters already talked about the adjacent Lot 7, so the lot immediately to the east of us here, there is a single-family home that's located on that property. However, it appears to me to be utilized for a quote-unquote quasi-commercial use, and it is in the highway commercial zone. It is not zoned residential, so we don't have the requirements of the setbacks and the buffers, those kinds of things. Your ordinance is very clear on that, and that only makes good planning sense, really, because what the hope is from your ordinance and your master plan, that as this corridor develops, it will develop in accordance with the highway commercial zone, which is what we all hope will end up there. We have prepared some site plans. Perhaps, Anthony, you could move on to Exhibit 2. This Exhibit 2 is the site plan that was prepared in support of this application, and as we can see, the lot is fairly narrow in shape and deep, and then being constrained again by wetlands located to the top of the map and behind the building, it makes the site constrained and shows that we have an unusually shaped lot that we're trying to create a commercial development here that fits into the footprint of development that this lot will allow. Mr. Peters is correct that the two larger units in the front of the proposed building, these units will be approximately 17,850 square feet, do have loading docks that will allow tractor-trailers to go into. Each one of those units can take a tractor-trailer to load into there, so it's made to be a more minimal warehousing operation, but we do have many contractors who utilize their deliveries from tractor-trailers. I mean, in particular, I was thinking about perhaps someone who has a ceiling company, for example, that would be getting in tracks and ceiling tiles and things like that that would take up large amounts of room. They may choose to want to store stuff on-site before getting it out to their job site, so, I mean, that was just one small example that I could think of. We do comply with your parking ordinance. We are required to have 99 parking stalls, and we are providing 99 parking stalls. We are also providing five electric vehicle-ready spaces that will give us the two-to-one credit, which gets us to the 99. That is how that we get there. Mr. Peters, or I believe it was Mr. Cleese actually asked that we give testimony as to how the coverages were calculated. So in this particular instance, your ordinance requires us to use the net acreage for the site, which means we have to take out the areas occupied by freshwater wetlands, and the net area of the site is 7.4 acres, so we have a 23% building coverage with the plan we're currently proposing, where the highway commercial zone permits 30%. And we have a 47% impervious coverage, where the ordinance permits 75%. The building itself is also, we do have the architect here this evening, but the building itself is also proposed to meet the height requirements. We're allowed to have a 35-foot height, and the building will be less than that. We're anticipating that this would be a metal-type building, like a Butler-type of building, and we do have some elevations, some renderings to show a little bit later on, talk about what the building is going to look like. In both Mr. Cleese's and Mr. Peters' reports, they talk about signs. Our plans do not show any signs, but we would propose to have a ground sign at the main entry to the facility, which will be the westernmost driveway here, and we would propose that to be a compliance sign, which means it would be less than six feet tall, it would have less than 30 square feet of area, and would be set 25 feet back from the front yard right-of-way line, and would also be landscaped. So that would be our intention, and then each tenant would have the ability to have a building mound and sign compliant with your ordinance over their particular tenant space. That's our intention for signs. We are proposing to have two refuse and recycling enclosures. One will be located in the eastern part of the site, and one will be located in the rear of the site. It is our intention that both will be screened and will have solid masonry walls having a minimum height of five feet, and that we will comply with the landscape requirements. My favorite part of this application is it actually has municipal water and sewer, which is very unusual for a lot of commercial applications we have in town, so I'm very happy to say that we do have municipal water and sewer here. We do have a preliminary approval from the JTMUA, so we will have fire protection as well as domestic water, and also having public sewer disposal opportunities. The landscaping that's proposed to be installed will be serviced by an individual well. JTMUA does not allow us to irrigate landscape beds with municipal water, so we will have a private well for irrigation, and the landscaping will be irrigated. Think perhaps, Anthony, that's a good segue to move on to the next exhibit, which is Exhibit A3. So what Exhibit A3 is really a colored rendering of what the site is going to look like when we get finished, and it's our intention that we will have substantial landscaping located along East Commodore, as well as in between us and our neighbor to the east. The rest of the site is really surrounded by vegetation, which is really going to remain. Even the site to the west is politely put environmentally challenged. I'm not sure what is there now. There's a gate there, there's a driveway that goes back to some yard. I'm not sure what is or was there, I don't recall, but I think that any development of that site is going to be difficult and will be hampered by the environmental conditions that they have on that piece of property. So I would believe that the vegetation that we're seeing here, at least adjoining this facility, is going to generally remain the way that it is today. We are proposing two stormwater management facilities, both located in the front up along Commodore here and here, and as well as providing underground recharge in the parking areas for the building itself, and the stormwater management facility does comply with the Jackson ordinance and also with the newly instituted green infrastructure requirements. We do have the approval of Jackson Township Environmental Commission. They issued a letter of no interest. We have a letter from Fire Prevention also basically saying that we have their approval with one fire hydrant to be added, and there were a couple of comments from Traffic Safety, which our traffic engine will talk about when we get further on. It would be our testimony that the proposed use will not produce traffic congestion, noise, glare, air pollution, fire hazards, or safety hazards as defined by the Township Ordinance Performance Standards. So the planning testimony for this is really pretty simple. It's a permitted use that we're seeking here. We're not asking for any variances. We do have some waivers, which we'll talk about as we get further into the testimony, but this is what your master plan and your zoning ordinance anticipate for this site, so it is what the township wanted to see developed here. So moving on to the waivers, we have four waivers that we're looking to get for this site. The first is along East Commodore. We are proposing curb along the frontage of the site, but we are seeking a waiver from providing sidewalk. There are not sidewalks on either side of this subject property, and we would agree to pay into the Township Pedestrian Fund should the board see fit to grant that variant, or that waiver, excuse me. The second waiver we're requiring really comes back to the narrow shape of the property. Your ordinance has a clause in it that states that we're not supposed to have parking aisles that are direct, parking stalls that are directly on main circulation aisles, and in this case, we have in the rear of the building, some parking stalls located off a main access aisle, as well as some smaller loading areas for the smaller tenant spaces, and then in the very back of the building, we also have parking spaces that are located right on a circulation aisle. The main parking for the front of the building is often, is compliant with your ordinance, but we would ask for the waiver for the parking along the side of the building and in the rear of the building. And that really just comes back to just the unusual shape of the property and the environmental conditions that we have to live with. The third waiver we're asking for, Mr. Cleese wrote up in his opening remarks, which is that we have two driveways going out to East Commodore, east and a west driveway. It's in... It's intended that the eastern driveway would be for the truck access, generally in and out of the site, and the main entrance would be on the western driveway. Your ordinance only permits two driveways if we have a frontage that's in excess of five hundred feet. Our frontage is four hundred and sixty-five feet. So we're close to what your ordinance requires, and we think that the unusual shape of this property warrants it. We believe this is the best circulation pattern that we could get for this property. And again, you'll hear more about that from our traffic engineer further into our presentation. And then the last waiver is along the western property line, we're supposed to have a ten foot wide landscaping strip, which we do have on the eastern side, but on the western side, where we abut the vacant property, we have a retaining wall in that ten feet. So technically, we don't meet the requirement, because the wall takes up some of the ten feet. So what we would propose to do to ameliorate the conditions of that variance would be to add additional landscaping, both in front and along the wall, so that we can end up with something that's aesthetically pleasing, and would come up with the intention, which is to have a ten foot wide screening strip along our property order. And that, I think, wraps up my direct testimony. Mr. Pfeffer would like me to go into the statement of operation. We did submit a prepared statement of operation, and as I said earlier, my testimony is proposed to operate the site as a contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop for multiple tenants, as permitted in the highway commercial zone. The building will be divided internally to allow for tenants based upon the market demand, whatever size would be warranted, that what we show is approximately eight tenants. And generally, from what my experience in working with buildings like this, I think it's a fairly close proximity to what is actually going to happen. Conditions that are required as part of your ordinance, all activities will be performed inside the building. There will be no outside storage of materials and equipment. There will be no manufacturing performed at the site, and company vehicles may be parked at the site overnight. We would expect the normal hours of operation to typically be from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday.
Any questions, Mr. Stevens?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Clea. Thanks. Any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Peter, is there any questions?
The ten-foot buffer on the west side of the property contains a four-foot-high wall, which you say you're going to add landscaping to. It'll be on the high side, the low side. My concern is that we build retaining walls that require you not to plant on top of them. And so we're going to put a buffer on top of a retaining wall. Do you have the room to put landscaping between the curb line, retaining wall, and the property line along that ten-foot strip?
Well, we have ten feet there. So I would agree with Mr. Peters. Again, we're both engineers, as well as being planners. And we don't like, you know, big woody vegetation on these things, but I think there could be the opportunity to plant some shrubbery, some low landscaping, and work with the landscape architects in both our office and his office to come up with a plan that I think can work. We have in the past landscape retaining walls. It can be done, and our property is on the high side, the low side is off-site.
So we really didn't get any testimony about why there's a landscaping, why there's a loading dock facing the street? Is there someone who's going to tell us why there's not a loading dock in the back of the property?
It really just boils down to the constraints of the property, the way that the wetlands and wetlands buffers come in, the widest part of the property is located in the front, which makes it the ideal place for us to have larger truck loading and circulation.
Respectfully, I think it's just yield. I think you could build, instead of having the building parallel the west property line, have it parallel the front property line, build a big, long box in the front, build a shorter one in the back, put the parking in the back. I'm not happy, I don't think it's a great layout to put a dumpster in the front yard that someone's going to see driving down the street, and loading docks that people are going to see driving down the street. And respectfully, your landscape plan shows nine trees. Along a hundred and ten-foot distance is the landscaping that's going to stop people from looking at the side of the building with loading docks. I think there's a better answer. And in our report, on page six, under Comment D three, Chapter two forty-four, one ninety-six E, indicates that no off-street loading and loading area should be permitted in the required front yard area. It appears this circulation area for the tractor-trailers is in the front yard. So it's a contractor's warehouse. Building tractor-trailer loading docks is bad enough. Building them in the front yard makes me wonder if this, respectfully, if this is the best layout this site could have. Thank you.
I agree very strongly that I don't like the, it looks all so nice on paper when you don't see that tractor-trailer truck sitting in the front. It just is not a look we're looking for, I don't think. It's, I know you're trying to do the best with what you have, and I can see the constraints of the property, but to have tractor-trailer trucks sitting in the front of the property, it's just not a good look.
So first of all, before we get to the loading docks, in the past, on similar applications, we asked the applicant to agree that, you know, to certain verbiage, I believe Mr. LeBrew wrote, Mrs. LeBrew wrote in a previous, you know, previous resolution limiting the use to a, you know, the contractor used to a service-based business. I believe that was a similar.
Yes, it was. I can pull it up.
Would you, Mr. Pfeffer, would you agree to a similar verbiage as we've used in the past?
What, the year of the verbiage? I'm not saying no, I just don't know what verbiage you're referring to.
I believe by a contractor warehouse, I believe another one of your applications limiting it to a service-based business, limiting the usage to a service-based business. While Mrs. LeBrew pulls it up, it's going back to the loading docks, you know, the board has traditionally frowned upon loading docks in the front on, you know, several other applications. You know, we don't like loading docks in the front. Mr. Stevens testified that, you know, there could be a conceivable reason why a loading dock will be necessary for this type of use. There's many conceivable reasons why it won't. I understand why you want it, but being in the front, I, you know, I tend to agree with Mr. Peters that, you know, let's put it in the back or maybe scratch it. That's just my opinion. And it's record.
Okay, real quick, because I got a bug out of here at eleven. For these two space, two contractor warehouses that require tractor-trailers, there's seventeen thousand five hundred, more or less. So you're going to have two tractor-trailers servicing them, which is twenty percent of their capacity. I'm having a hard time reconciling why you would have such a small space being served by a tractor-trailer, when the total capacity is sixteen tractor-trailers for the whole building, for those two stalls. I don't agree with you on the ten-foot setback landscaping retaining wall. You can modify that side of the building to make that work, so I don't agree. I agree on the sidewalks, I agree on the two driveways. The constraints on the site environmentally and the shape, well, you know, honestly, I know what your defense is going to be for the saturation, but you need to look at building a rectangle or reorienting, reorientating the building, if not building two smaller buildings on it. I would at least shave, you know, five, seven feet off the back of the building that faces glories. I might even add a chamfer for circulation, but I'm not with you with the understanding of the two tractor-trailer docks, because I don't see a way that you're, you have outbound freight. You have two fifty-two inch high bays, but I don't see anything, you know, for product leaving. So I'm really not in the favor of that. I do tend to agree with you as far as the averaging, but I, my perception of the saturation in the site, it's just too much, and it's easily solved if you change the back of the building. I'm not in favor of dumpsters being up front, really not in favor of the tractor-trailers being up front. I'm sorry, it's on a main road. If it was off on Harmon Road or Secondary Road, I would tend to agree with you. I would support you. But I think, you know, the number four fix is a really easy one. I don't think it's a big detriment to lose five feet to make it work. So I'll leave it there. Other than that, you know, I understand where you're coming from with the constraints. Thank you.
I do have the language that the board has considered regards to these applications, that a contractor is a person or company that undertakes a contract to provide materials, labor, or a service to perform a job, and that a contractor's services would be performed for an off-site customer, and that the contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop area is used by contractors as an office to display materials that can be installed off-site, for the storage of materials and equipment that are necessary for their business, and the conduct of minor equipment repairs. The customers are not carrying out items or ordering items for delivery off-site, and there's no manufacturing or distribution of goods that would be taking place from the site.
So yes, so that language would be acceptable. I mean, for example, the applicant is dealing, talking, in talks with like a roofing contractor. Again, materials, they may look at what color the roof is going to be, but, and then they'll just deliver it to the site and install it, but not for retail-type uses. So yes, that language would be acceptable.
Adam, you said the last applicant was in talks with Fisher Roofing.
I didn't say Fisher Roofing, there are multiple roofing companies.
Anybody else here, Mr. Harry?
Yeah, it indicated that you're looking for averaging, okay? Because it looks like one of the lines of wetlands really encroaches tremendously onto your property. So by averaging, you're hoping that the DEP will let you basically move that back so you can take it someplace else. Am I correct?
So Mr. Harry, yes, you are correct. So we do have wetlands buffer lines that encroach into the developable area where we're looking to develop the property, but we also have areas outside of the development that we can average with. So our proposal to the DEP is to show there's a dashed line, basically, which just follows the footprint of the development, you know, more or less in this area and in this area, where we're averaging the wetlands. So we're adding wetlands back into the back, where we have some developable land that we're not using, and taking away where it's more important to basically create, to the best of our ability, a square lot to develop a commercial use on.
What do you think is the likelihood that they'll agree with you?
I believe that our proposal meets all the current requirements, and if you do, generally, they're accepted and approved. I can't remember one that was ever denied.
And if they don't, they'll have to come back.
Correct, yes.
Well, I mean, the reason I was asking is that if the DEP doesn't really, you know, do this on a routine basis, then what we're talking about is moot until you.
Oh, no, Mr. Harry, yes, they do do it on a routine basis. There's a set criteria that you can do this with, there's certain dimensions you can go down to and increase to, and there's a whole table of things that you need to work through, but our plan does conform, and I believe that it will be approved. It is in the DEP already, we're waiting for that approval.
If they don't, then you go back, get the pencils out and go back to the drawing board.
Correct, yes. We would have to come back.
Correct, back before this board.
While you're at that drawing board, you have to move that trash out of the front. It's in the front of the building. You could put it in the back opposite corner. I know it's far, but, or maybe midway, if you reconfigure, you might be able to put it midway closer to the building, but you can't have it in the front.
Okay, ma'am, duly noted.
Can you put the trash by that little, the L area, that little corner, which is the L shape, which has kind of sheltered from the street?
It is potentially possible, yes. We were reserving that area, right in here is where we're looking at, for loading of the first small unit, to have a small loading area for that, but it could be possible that we could do that. I understand the board's concerns. We will take a look at modifying the plan and try to come back with something that is something you would be more happy to see.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you have to come back to fix some of these issues?
Correct.
Perfect, so. Sir, Mr. Harry?
There'll be no outside storage?
No.
Or, like I said, hazardous chemicals?
I didn't hear the last part.
No hazardous chemicals?
No hazardous, no, we'll comply completely with the ordinance.
If it's a paint shop, that's a different story, okay? But as far as other hazardous chemicals, they'll be controlled.
Right, and we will, we would agree to, here, obviously, with whatever the requirements of the ordinance are, which I think they already delineate, the hazardous materials. I'm not sure if it's worthwhile to bring up the traffic or the architect, as if we may have to be making some revisions, and they may tweak the traffic and circulation.
So I guess the hour is late.
Can I just ask, though, on, some of these changes might be able to be done fairly quickly.
So listen to the rest of what I'm about to say. You're coming back on September eighteenth anyway?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrew is going to be back anyway, September eighteenth?
Yes.
Can you be ready by then?
Yes, that, we would plan to have that and have any resubmissions in at least ten days before.
Our professionals would request a little bit more than ten days, they do have to write review letters.
Understood. We will do our best to get it in, and, yes.
Mr. Peters, any drop dead date where, or Mr. Clea, that you could prepare your
I think the land use law requires ten days, you know, prior to. I'd like more like fourteen.
Understood.
Mr. Pfeffer? Is that okay? Yeah, so Block forty-nine oh one, I'm sorry. Go back to you.
Forty-three oh one.
Forty-three oh one, Lot five, six through eighty-one, east, sorry. Block forty-three oh one, Lot five and six, eighty-one East Commodore LLC, will be moved to.
September eighteenth.
I believe there will not be a requirement for further notice?
No, we've done notice here.
Okay, and you waive time through the end of September?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, let's get a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What date was that?
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth. They're back anyway, and, one second, let just, Laura, are we okay with that?
I have a change.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, no, we're, yeah.
And I'll just point out that the two other applications are related entities, so if we need to bump something internally, we'll take care of it, but September eighteenth works for everybody.
Perfect, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.